Big group. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So Bob could not make it tonight. He had a lot of work issues come up, so I will be on the meeting. Okay. Sorry we're a little late. We were in executive session discussing the employment history of particular persons and potential litigation. First item is acceptance of the agenda. Oh, I should add the, I guess, add the...
If we would like to, if the board would like to add, following the superintendent's report, we have business of the board, item 4.1, which is board meeting topics and presentation schedule. If we could add another item to business of the board, which would be discussion, board discussion on the data dashboard concept, which was originally intended to be a part of my report, but we thought it would be more appropriate to have the discussion formally.
So would that be like, I guess, 10.2?
No, I would say 4. Section 4, business of the board, we could do that.
Okay. Okay. So may I have the motion to accept the amended agenda?
Hold on. One second, please. Please speak to...
9.2, we're pulling that one.
Okay.
9.2 on personnel.
Okay.
We're pulling that one.
Okay.
Are we going to change your ones?
Yes.
Okay, so pulling 9.2 and adding...
Dolores?
4.2.
Okay, well, still...
Hold on, you have an old company now.
Okay.
What I have 9.2 is change for custodians.
That's why I printed it out for everybody.
Okay.
Most current ones on the...
So the printout, printed out version is accurate?
Okay.
So if you could please apologize for the confusion, we could just, we will leave 9.2. The only modification that I would ask for then is discussion in section 4 on business of the board on the data dashboard.
We're leaving that 9.2? This is the one that was on the desk?
That 9.2 is correct, yes.
That's staying?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. So I have motion to accept the amended agenda, adding 4.2.
So moved. Second.
Office favor?
Aye.
Most carries 4-0. Okay. Superintendent's report, take it away.
Good evening, everyone. Certainly nice to see everybody on this lovely fall night. Few items to discuss. Certainly tonight, we have an agenda that's, I think, rich with important dialogue, as we already highlighted, the data dashboard conversation that we're going to have momentarily. But we are also going to talk about a number of presentations that the administration plan on providing for the board and community this school year. And then we are going to take a big step forward and try to finalize some goals that we've been working on for the past month. I would like to commend a number of students and staff at our high school that facilitated a Walk for the Cure, the Bulldog Walk, on Friday, which was a walk fundraised for breast cancer. It was led by the Irvington High School Student Council and co-sponsored by the Irvington Faculty Association. We also had student council and key club involved in a lot of baking efforts to supplement the enjoyment that on Friday afternoon. And we're proud to announce that they raised over $1,500 on that day. So kudos to our students and staff who led an important charge on this critical topic. Throughout this school year, you will see that the administration and the Board of Education are going to have a renewed and invigorated focus on discussing instructional initiatives, items that are happening in our schools with respect to teaching and learning. And I would, as a part of my report on a regular basis, I'm going to ask Dr. Core to speak to a couple items that are timely related to activities that are occurring in our schools. And I think you have three important topics to report on tonight. So, Dr. Core?
So the first would be just an update for people. That Thursday, we are doing Common Core, Come and Explore the Common Core. And it's an opportunity for K-5 parents to come to Main Street School Auditorium. And we will give an overview of the Common Core, what the Common Core is, what it isn't, related to ELA and math. So we hope, I think we're up to about 60 parents right now. We do an RSVP so that we can plan for materials and how many people will be there. So we're at about, I think, 61 was the number as of today. And we're hoping that more people will be signing up in the next couple of days. It's from 7:00 PM to 8:00 PM.
Main Street School.
I said Main Street School. What?
Mentioned that we're intending on videotaping the workshop. So it is our first effort in a while and going down that path. So we hope that everything works out well. And then shortly after the program, we will then run it from our website and post the related materials for those folks that can't be in attendance that evening. Sorry.
A couple of other items that we thought you might be interested in. This year, we will be engaging in a tri-state visit for our world language program. So the TriStates Consortium is an organization that we are members of, and it is for school districts that are similar to ours, high achieving school districts. And it is an opportunity for us to do a self-evaluation that is followed by an evaluation of a team of educators who come from districts in our area. And this team of educators will come in and they spend three days in the district and they try to build their understanding of our program. In this case, it will be the world language program. And they do that by looking at evidence of what teaching and learning looks like, so samples of student work, samples of assessments, the way is a school district, our budget supports a particular program, as well as through the interview process. They will interview students, teachers, administrators, the superintendent of schools, parents. And through the interview process, they begin to collect data on where we are in our world language program, in this case, and how our world language program is meeting the needs of our district. So we have engaged in three prior assessments or evaluations, and that was ELA, math, and science. Those were all K-12. And world language, obviously, is our 6-12 program, so it will be for 6-12. This visit will be taking place in March, and there is quite a bit of work that goes into planning and preparation for the visit. So there'll certainly be more to come on this in more details, but it is something we are working, focused on as the world language department, to begin to prepare for the visit.
Raina, can you just state again, who are the professionals who are doing the interviews?
The, they, what TriStates does is they put together a team of educators who are interested. So they'll put out at the beginning of the year, here are all the visits that we're going to be doing this year. And what they try to do is get especially the teachers who are of that curriculum area. So generally, what will happen is the team will include administrators from other districts and generally, teachers from, or department chairs who are working that curriculum area in their home districts.
Just, my big concern about the whole process is when it pulls our teachers out of the classroom, is there any way to try to work around it where as much as possible, our teachers stay in the classroom and aren't pulled out during the day?
As much as possible, there definitely is some out of the classroom for preparation. We do try and limit it. For science, for instance, we were able to use the superintendent's conference day as one of the days where they were prepping. It definitely is a challenge. But during the three-day visit, teachers are not out of their classrooms at all. So during the three-day visit there, we work around teacher's schedules to set up the interview process. But there is definitely time that the teachers need to take to prepare and put together the information that they have to provide for this team to be able to assess where we are. I guess the three points that the TriState Consortium looks at is the approach, implementation, and results. So they actually come in with a very targeted approach to look at how are we, what's our approach to world language? In other words, how many languages do we offer? Implementation of our curriculum? How aligned is our curriculum from one course to the next? And then the results? What does the data tell us? How are we doing? How do our kids do? What are some of the recommendations they could make, as well as the commendations that they'll provide us with?
If anyone's interested, as Raina said, we've done three over the past eight years, maybe, nine years. And for whatever reason, I feel like if you're going to go back and read one, the ELA one was really exceptional. And that was the one we did the longest ago. It was probably like nine years ago. And I believe you could still, Elaine certainly has a copy. If anyone's interested, I would recommend going back and kind of going through it, because then you just get an idea of how it took place and how the recommendations are formulated and given to the district.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's, I'd love to see, probably the other one.
Look at all of them. There's math and there's science. And the interesting thing about math was people were a little frustrated because they didn't comment on what program you had. They just commented on the effectiveness of what you're doing.
They didn't wing into the trail, was it?
Correct. So I think that it definitely, it was a little more controversial than the others as a result of that. But, you know, they're all interesting to read and as you'll see, some are much more, some you get much more useful information out of than others for a variety of reasons. So it's actually worth taking a look at all of them.
It results in a set of commendations and recommendations. For ELA, they had 52 recommendations. So as a district, once you get your actual report, it then becomes the decision of the district to say, well, where are we going to put our energy? What are we, you know, where do we see our areas for growth? Obviously, you can't address 52. And maybe we didn't even, maybe we didn't even necessarily agree with all 52. In other words, this is a team of people who are coming in to try and give us some feedback.
Didn't they come back, wasn't there, there's one follow-up visit after the recommendations to see how you're doing with the recommendations?
Two years later, they come back and it's called like a revisit, and they actually say, so here's what we said, tell us what you did.
Can we get copies of all the reports?
Are they only available on paper or are they electronic?
Um, I don't know.
I don't know how large they are, what we concerned.
You just want to... Scan them in.
We'll sort them.
Yeah.
You have to...
Really large.
...a bite.
Oh, oh, that's...
Yeah.
There was some, there is an executive summary.
Maybe just the executive summary.
We could, why don't we take a look and see what we have, and then we can figure out what makes the most sense to put it into a format.
We just didn't hear much.
Any questions about that?
No, good.
Okay. The last topic that we just wanted to share with you tonight is some of the work that we are doing as an administration. As a result of APPR, actually, we have begun to really look more deeply at the consistency across our district of our administrators and the observation and evaluation process. And over the last year, we have really taken steps, we believe, to improve our inter-rater reliability, so that no matter who the administrator is in any one of our buildings or a person who's evaluating teachers, that there's an expectation of a consistent approach to how that's taking place. So in the Irvington School District, teachers start the year with a goal-setting process where they sit with the administrator who's going to observe them throughout the year. And then over the course of the year, the, each teacher is observed four times, two full-period observations as well as two walkthroughs. And then we result in an end-of-year evaluation, an end-of-year meeting where teachers share additional work and where they talk about how they achieved or the experience they had in working toward the goal that they set for themselves. The goal for every teacher is based on an instructional goal. So looking, using our rubric, our Charlotte Danielson Framework for Teaching, every teacher selects a component that they're focused on. So if, as a result of observations, possibly a teacher throughout the course of the year thought about or worked with an administrator or colleagues to look at their assessment, how are they assessing students? How do they know what kids know and are able to do? And they feel that that's an area for growth, they might set that as their goal for the next year, and they work, they work on everything, but they target that. So as administrators, we have really worked to improve our ability to have consistent approaches to working with teachers as well as across the building. So I just wanted to share a few things that we're doing as an administrative team. One is the, at our administrative meetings, we do what are called instructional rounds where we all go into classrooms and we go in triads, teams of two, three, sometimes four, three or four people. And we go in looking for what are students doing? So we don't always start with what a teacher's doing, we say, what are students doing? Is the instruction or the engagement in learning, is it effective? Do we see that kids know what it is they're supposed to be doing? Are they learning? So by looking at students and student work, it helps us to see what is going on across grades, across classrooms, as well as across courses. So that's our instructional walkthroughs. In addition, we, Dr. Harrison and I will both be co-observing with each administrator. So as part of our observation process or evaluation process of administrators, we'll be each co-observing at least one teacher. So again, so that we have that inter-rater reliability. Is Joyce Chatnick looking for the same things? Do we see the same things when we sit in a classroom? So that's another way that we increase our ability to be consistent and our inter-rater reliability. And we also have encouraged peer review of teacher-to-teacher visits to classrooms so that teachers are starting to talk about what their instruction looks like. And all of this is focused on the idea of professional learning communities. And the more our teachers are talking about instruction, the higher levels of instruction we're going to, we will see, and the more consistent instruction. So I just share those as examples of, this is an important priority for us, and we're really taking it on full speed and full force.
Can I just ask, can I scaffold for us? I guess I'm learning these things, but it's, I have to use the... Do, are the, generally, the people doing the evaluation, are they're administrators? I mean, they're being their principals assistant or assistant principals?
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
And when we're talking about inter-rater reliability, that means somebody else has got to go in and say, David Sotile is reviewing a set of teachers, or looking, or observing, or observing a set of teachers. That means somebody else has got to cross-check some subset of what he's doing to see if, like, Joyce Chatnick, to see if she comes up with a similar set of views, right?
Well, we develop it through multiple approaches. So one would be is the example where, so, you know, Dr. Harrison evaluates the principals. So he would do a co-observation with David Sotile. That would be one measure. The other way that we begin to build that inter-rater reliability, though, is through the instructional rounds. So when we've been in a classroom and now three or four of us walk out and we start to talk about, well, what did you see? Well, what did you observe? Or I had a conversation with a student and then this is what this student said versus what this student said. So the way that we build that inter-rater reliability is scaffolded through multiple systems.
Okay, I see. A question that occurred to me, if you're dealing with sort of more advanced stroke levels, I guess, perhaps mostly high school, maybe middle school some, do you run into the issue where the nature of the teaching, like in advanced word language or something like that, is too specialized for administrators to really evaluate properly? And you mean to have teachers do that?
Sure. World language, I guess, is a really good example of that.
Yeah, or a science.
Or a sciences. One of the things that we started last year that we will continue, we haven't started yet this year, but we did, we will, is the department chairs being, engaging in instructional rounds as well. And part of our goal is exactly that, where they have the content expert, and sometimes not, honestly. I mean, you could be a department chair and not have the content expertise.
You might be a science department chair and...
And, right. But it's definitely, one of our efforts to address that is by also having department chairs do some of this work as well.
Together with an administrator or alone?
We've done, we will do it both ways. Sometimes on their own as chairs, and there's value in that, for them to be learning together. You know, the goal is around the learning, and then sometimes it will be with us as well.
We had some issue that came up a few years ago, though, that they have to be, you have to be an administrator in order for the evaluation to be a true evaluation.
The instructional rounds are not, they're not formal, they're not evaluative. They are really for our own learning to help our system to work at a higher level.
They're in addition to the four times of...
Exactly. Yes. The formal...
Evaluation for the APPR.
Absolutely.
So, right, they're not, but they still might be very useful.
They're...
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, not useful, but perfect.
I think what's important to highlight is the layers of contact that leadership has with teachers on a regular basis in the classrooms. So when we go back and look at the old APPR, and we had a situation essentially where teachers were being formally evaluated once every three years, because of the new APPR, they're being evaluated four times every year, or observed four times every year. But then you have to think about all the layers that Raina mentioned going through this process, in that, you know, we have the instructional rounds that are occurring with the administrative team. We have the co-observations that are occurring with one of the district-level administrators co-observing teachers. Rain also mentioned how we're going to engage the department chairs again. But then, as another layer to this, is that Raina, working with our principals and assistant principals, she does monthly instructional rounds and walkthroughs with them specifically. And then I'm doing the same with the principals on a monthly basis. So when you're talking about the contact with teachers, the instruction, adding layers and layers of supervision and learning for us, I think there's much better connection with what the children are doing in the classroom, where our needs are, and certainly the successes that we need to build upon. So it's been very productive.
Actually, I have a question about the use of the four observations, in that obviously those four observations are, you create a calculation that's used to create the composite score, but you must also be gathering qualitative data as well, you're observing them. I'm wondering, what's the process when you observe a teacher and you clearly see something that you think is deficient in some way? How, what are the actions then that come out of that? What is the formal process that administration takes in terms of working with that teacher?
So the observations always have a post-observation component to them. So once an administrator has observed, then there is a follow-up meeting within 48 hours of that, of the observation. Depending, if there's an area of concern, then it is addressed there and then followed up by the administrator, either through the more informal walkthrough, as well as a formal, could be another formal observation. But I think, I think more successfully, it's really them partnering with the teacher on an informal basis to be in that classroom more, to be popping in, to be talking to the teacher, and sitting and sometimes making a plan with that teacher for what they're going to do in their classroom. So I think it depends, but every piece along the way has a follow-up component to it, whether it be a walkthrough or whether it be a formal observation.
At what stage does it become part of their file, so to speak?
It becomes all along the way. So from the beginning of the year, once the administrator does the observation, they send a copy, a copy goes automatically to the teacher's personnel file. And the actual observations are getting calculated, will get calculated at the end of the year. The qualitative data you're also referring to is, the framework for teaching has four components, four domains. So planning and preparation is domain one. Domain two is classroom environment. Domain three is instruction. And domain four is professional responsibility. So the only thing that is really observable are domains two and three, classroom environment and instruction. So our observations are heavily steeped in domains two and three. The qualitative comes more from planning and preparation, looking at a teacher's lesson plans and their unit plans, as well as their reflection and how they adjust their instruction to meet students' needs. So domains one and four tend to be more qualitative, and domains two and three tend to be more quantitative.
A few other things then to thank you, Raina. Well done. Just to draw to everyone's attention that the fall play is just around the corner, the first and second of the month. We also want to acknowledge that the middle school, there's going to be a nice French celebration all week long, the week of the fourth, and that we have a great program at the middle school. Also, parent program, co-sponsored by the PTSA, Rivertown Parents, that it's, Terrence Warhan is a guest speaker, a program entitled, "It's All in Their Heads." It's an adult-only program, and the objective of the program is to help parents understand some of the complexities that our youngsters are facing during their years of adolescence. So please mark your calendar, that'll be November 12th in the theater at 7:00 PM.
Hi. So, I guess, I guess next up is, is this the board?
Is this the board, is it? We do the committee reports, that's fine.
I know. It's kind of out of, not the same order for us.
If you want to suspend any of the direction.
Yeah, I mean, that's fine. We accepted the agenda, it's fine.
Yeah, yeah, man. Very good. So Elaine, do you want to bring up the calendar? So heading into this school year, as I said earlier, we made a strong commitment to want to increase the frequency and the quality of the presentations that we're providing at the board level, not only to share the goings-on of the district with the Board of Education, but to certainly share them with the public. So with that said, the administration came up with a number of ideas, bounced some of them by the board, and we've come up with a schedule of numerous presentations for this school year.
You know, I completely, I apologize, I completely forgot to pull that, maybe two seconds.
Okay.
There were handouts at the back.
Sure. So hopefully, everybody has a copy, since the links are there in the back. You know, we've documented, if you look at the table that was provided, we've documented those presentations that we've done thus far in the year. So you can look to today, that conversation about goals, of course. But moving forward, you can see a number of areas that we are looking to address in the coming weeks. Student performance report, APPR, adoption of district goals, revisit the space utilization study, guidance program, Board of Education goals, and so on. So there are a number of important topics here. We're trying a rather holistic approach so that we're connecting with a number of...
(coughing)
Oh, no.
Aye.
A number of different areas, addressing things that are pressing and timely, looking at Common Core learning standards in the elementary and middle grades, and in doing so, not only talking about the shifts that are before us, but also the impacts in classroom, ELA, mathematics, and how some of those extend to other content areas as well. Some business items in looking at tax certs, financial reserves, talking about our professional learning. Dr. Core was sharing examples of how we utilize our supervision evaluation process to inform professional learning, but obviously, that is just one angle of all that we do to support teachers and student learning in the district. But then beginning to tackle another, many other items, talking about athletics and PE, special education, looking at curriculum development and instructional technology, high school Common Core learning standards, so looking at a similar presentation, as we referenced earlier, with K-5 in the middle grades, but looking at the impacts of the high school. And then towards the end of the year, also looking at world languages. You can see, if you look at items in red, you can see where we laid this over the typical budget process. But we also have areas that we know we're going to need to add, such as long-range planning and addressing needs around the athletic fields, which are both related to the goals that we'll be discussing later. So this is a proposal, but recognizing need for shift and some change here. One item that certainly stands out is looking for some movement, might be the possibility of moving the high school presentation up a little sooner in the year, and also looking to November 5th, because that date is getting rather heavy, and looking at how we can spread some of that information out on that evening. Also, I think there's some time and consideration to look at our budget presentation and process to ensure that we're being very, very thorough, having as much... to ensure that we're being very, very thorough, having as much transparency and disclosure as we possibly can, but to try to do so in a way where we're more effective in engaging our community for the duration of the conversations. Last year, we started the dialogue in December. We've moved it ahead one month, but there may be consideration to look at other pathways there as well.
Yeah, I mean, I think, just for the purposes of the community, I think we as a board and the administration decided it was better to kind of lay things out upfront, so the year wouldn't speed by us, but I think it's definitely an organic document, and as you said, it's going to change, we're going to add, we're going to shift, and I just think having something laid out seemed to make sense at the beginning of the year, so things didn't fall through the cracks, and then what you will kind of adjust as necessary, it's certainly not set in stone, and I think things arise that you don't anticipate, and other things might, for whatever reason, become less important and get shifted around. So.
Was there a reason why you had the High School Common Core learning standards in March, as opposed to nestled up with the other grades?
No, I think-
Spread them out?
We were trying to certainly spread things out, but as I was speaking, you know, clearly I saw that myself-
Yeah.
And the connection there. But we, you know, as Ms. Carter indicated, that this is fluid to some degree. You know, when we think about the needs that are going to come up with respect to athletic fields or long-range planning, clearly there may be need to add additional meetings that are going to be solely for those particular purposes. So every time we have a conversation about long-range planning or fields, doesn't mean that it needs to occur at a Board of Education meeting.
And I think the other thing that we've all kind of committed to is looking to do a little bit more in terms of, I guess, education for parents and community at the building level. So this isn't exhaustive, there'll be other things, such as what you're doing Thursday night at the, for K-5 programs, such as that'll be occurring throughout the year on an ongoing basis, in an attempt to just communicate and educate. So whereas a lot of people don't like to come to the board meeting, we're hoping to get more people out there, if it's an engaging topic, you know, at the campus theater in the middle of the weeknight.
So there's going to be certainly multiple opportunities, and Dr. Core, and teachers, and principals, particularly at the elementary level, will be providing follow-up programs to the Common Core program that she shared that's being held on Thursday evening. So we'll develop a calendar of those particular events, and they'll be marketed primarily towards the school audiences, but we'll communicate that information as well on our Facebook page, website, and of course, our weekly newsletter.
A question just about the format here. In some cases, on February 11th and February 25th, you are, I think, intentionally repetitive in that you have the budget presentation in red, and then you have the other thing in black. Is the, what is the other thing apart from the red?
So if we're looking at what's listed in red-
Yeah.
It would be the budget overview-
Right.
And maybe the budget initiative associated with those particular areas. But when we're looking at, I think, you know, we're looking at providing an overview of our athletics program, and PE program, and special education program, it just seemed natural to connect the two, that we could have Mr. McCormick, we could have Scott and Gail talking about special education on the night that we're talking about the budget. I think it just enables us to connect the dots in a way that may make the budgetary discussion more relevant.
I guess the only thought I would have is that there might be some advantage to disconnecting curriculum and instructional technology from the budget presentation itself, because if we had a presentation sooner, again, more in January-ish, possibly December, but I was thinking January, then the dialogue from the board at that point would actually influence the budget. If you are presenting the budget, and you're going to talk about curriculum at the same time, and then, I guess, two weeks later, it's kind of your final budget presentation, there isn't much opportunity to iterate. And I think that curriculum and instructional technology are kind of special, and-
Well, then.
Yeah, and therefore should go up farther in the schedule, not to take anything away from the athletics and special ed program, but we've had so much dialogue about how to bring instructional technology more formally into our program development, and then of course, curriculum as a whole, it just seems to make sense to bring that up.
We certainly will look to, I've marked three items then to consider, different timeframes, and that's the programs listed in black, which are administrative presentations not associated with the budget, and that's athletics, PE, special education, curriculum development, instructional technology in the high school-
Yep.
-Common Core program. So we'll look to shift them. You know, the, if you look at January 14th, we've identified tax certs, financial reserves, and so forth, being identified and coupled with the push-ahead budget, because we're looking at projections there. So I saw a relationship there again. So we'll play with it a little bit. I don't know if there's other suggestions. You know, there's that possibility, do we want to consider moving, it may help us with some of the management of this, even if we moved, you know, if it's practical to move the first budget presentation up to January 28th as a possibility, to condense some of the dialogue even further. That frees up a time slot there, to have one of those other important conversations.
Right.
You know, I think also it depends on, you know, is best for us to get a handle on the numbers, we might get a sense as to, do we need more or less time, as we're going to go through it.
Okay. I have to be honest. We're not, in terms of curriculum slash instruction, what the school's about, we're just breaking this into elementary, middle, and high school, just with every subject. I don't think it's practi, I don't think it's necessarily practical to say that we're going to address every single subject in those areas, but I think if we're looking at, for example, our December 3rd, K-5 Common Core learning standards, to look at the impact of the implementation of the Common Core on our program, which is going to be, the primary focus is going to be ELA and mathematics. There's obvious connection in, and influence on social studies, science program, when you look at the types of reading and writing that students are engaged in. What would be, I mean, what might, to me, make more sense, or is be valuable? Just to toss out an idea is if we could create an ELA K-12 in one presentation, what does the ELA program do, what if you could trace the standards, you could trace what we're doing, and you could do similar things in that, rather than like that building by building. To me, there's value in doing that, I'm not sure.
So trying just not to do too much at one time?
Well, or just, they do it more vertically rather than horizontally.
I mean, in addition, the other thing that I think would be interesting, because we touched upon it a little bit when we were in our guidance meeting, ninth-grade parents, but with the guidance counselors and the administration, is just kind of what, looking forward for the high school, there's definitely some plans in place for new electives and new courses coming down the pike, I mean, that's kind of interesting, too. And I don't know if it's just, you know, again, vertically or horizontally, but-
Yeah, I guess for me, it's so much of what we're about, is trying to build a K-12, a lunchroom, you know, program, see how that works, would be very valuable. I think, I guess there's a piece to it, and I understand the point and the value of it. I'm looking at the number of opportunities that we have before us, and I think understanding Common Core is important, so we're trying to make those connections. I guess I'm not really sure what the plan that you're accomplishing, understanding Common Core is. Do we more or less understand what the Common Core is? I think we were talking about it, looking at the, with the instructional impacts, and I think there's a lot more to it than reading a document or a set of standards, and looking at the practical implications that are being rolled out for teachers and children at levels, and it looks differently at an elementary level than it does at a middle school level and a high school level. We can give consideration to how we could address those different types of presentations. I'll be honest with you to say that it seems, to me, it seems to work naturally to deliver it in this way, because that's how our focus has been in working with teachers, is looking at, looking at the elementary cluster, middle, and high school, and where those lines of communication and attention have been structured right now. But we can certainly consider how we could do it differently. The other, one other thing that really sticks out to me is that we're going to wait until the end of, until the tri-state report, to talk about world language, which I think is an area that the board, we've identified is an area that really has interesting topics. And ready for, you know, ready for the topic, it's not really helpful.
We won't have the report from that.
So we won't have the report that just says-
Well, you know, I mean-
We don't need the report necessarily, but that means we're in the year of the faculty issue, which is-
In fact, I mean, I kind of, to me, I think part of the discussion, which needs to come earlier rather than later, has to be about the priorities of the district, as we're talking about the goal-setting and the long-term planning, and I think some of that might also be tied into decisions we need to make at the budget level. So, I mean, world language is tied into that part, so I'm almost kind of, I guess I'm kind of thinking, aren't there two parts? One is goal-setting priorities, which we need to do now, and kind of, I'm sure we're going to keep circling back to. I don't think it's a point in the sand at which point we're going to talk about language. I mean, to me, I think technology and language specifically are probably going to be conversations we're going to be having, kind of threading through the next few months.
Right, I agree, and technology is another area where we have to, we keep, we've already asked, keep asking, what's going on in technology, what are we doing?
Right, and-
What are our strategies, if you want to be informed?
I mean, right, I certainly hope we're not going to put it shelf it till February 25th, but I think this, as a date of a board presentation, you know, I guess I do them as different things.
Right.
Well, we can have the world language tri-state report on April 24th, because-
Yeah.
It's not going to come sooner than that, but we can also have a dialogue about world language beginning soon.
Yeah.
Yeah, just, in a way, this is, it's not so much about the presentations per se, as it is about what I work with.
Right.
Those are important. If I may, you know, we're looking at the scheduling of a number of larger-scale presentations that does not preclude us from having other discussion items added to the agenda, and I think once we, assuming we adopt district goals at the next meeting, we develop our action plans that are going to be to fulfill those goals, there's going to be a number of items that come up from that, and I think that it would be appropriate for us throughout the year to have discussion about our progress towards those goals. And assuming that there's attention on technology, attention on world language, if that becomes a part of the final product, that I would foresee that being a part of our ongoing dialogue. I think as a leadership group, we're very committed and driven by setting meaningful goals that are going to be impactful and actionable. So if we're not going to touch base on them on a consistent basis and talk about those, the progress that we're making, the goals are meaningless. So because we don't have something listed for world language, science, or building cleanliness, let's say, as an issue here, doesn't mean that it can't come up as a discussion throughout the course of the year. Right, okay. It does seem to me that, we do need some overview of technology, the complex of issues around technology, as it's often mentioned earlier. And how to do- And that was one of the areas I marked that we'll look to. Yeah, and well, you know, you have a lot, and also, by the way, you have a lot on November 5th, as you said.
I'll move some of that to our-
Yeah.
I'm really behind today.
Yeah. All right, I think we should move forward. I think Chris will take the comments. I think at any point, if anyone wants to talk to you or suggest something, we can, and I think it's a good starting point, and it's agreed. We're way ahead of the April, compared to where we were last year, so I think it's a good step in the right direction.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is Board Committee Liaison Report.
We were going to talk about data dashboard.
Oh, that's right, 4.2.
Yeah, we added on.
What we added to the agenda in the beginning of the meeting has to do with the data dashboard mandate, which is a parent portal mandated by the Race to the Top Initiative, and I know that, you know, we've touched upon this in meetings before, the deadline for a district to declare if they are, I guess, which portal we would opt for, assuming we remain in the Race to the Top, is October 31st. However, I know there has been discussion initiated by the administration, that the suggestion on the table is that the board should consider kind of opting out of Race to the Top, and therefore, we would not have to, we would not have to go with a parent portal amongst the three that they suggested, we'd be able to use our existing system and continue along that route. So given that we will not have another board meeting before the October 31st date, we agreed that we should probably have this discussion as a board, if, you know, to confirm or decide what we're going to do in terms of the Race to the Top Initiative.
Yeah, we started the conversation probably back in end of August, and I've been giving updates as information's become available. One of the real challenges associated with this, there has been limited access to people to talk about exactly what's happening and what's going on. There was one in-person meeting that was facilitated in our region, and it happened to be the day before school started, so that was a bit of a challenge for most people to attend. The SED then published some webinars, and the three different vendors from which you could choose, each have a webinar that's a part of the broader SED webinar, which we've viewed. So we've had information that's been available that we've been able to access from the state. The state, though, there's been requests from our region, primarily, say, the Lower Hudson Valley, to want to have a forum here, not only to be able to talk with vendors, or to get information from vendors, to better understand their products, but to have conversation with folks and representatives from SED, to talk about what their intent is, what our commitments are going to be, because there is so much gray area associated with this. I can tell you that my professional organization has been trying for weeks. We received commitments from folks from SED, and finally, they have agreed to come and facilitate a meeting on the 24th. So I can tell you that there's a lot of folks that are attending, whether they're on the technology front of districts, or in leadership roles, and we're hopeful that we're going to get some more direction out of that, but unfortunately, as Robin indicated, that that's, you know, the deadline is a week later, and there isn't a board meeting in between to be able to publicly report out-
Although, we could always call a special meeting of the board if we need to.
If necessary. You know, and I guess I'll just, before the board wants to share their thoughts, like to share some of my thinking that's been connected with this, that right now, I would say, the large number of comparable districts to Irvington are not opting to participate in this. There's either a handful of districts that have, going back a few years ago, opted not to participate in Race to the Top, so they're not required to do so and are not selecting a portal. There are many other districts that have had conversations like ours, that have decided not to move forward with this particular initiative. A lot of the rationale around it is the fact that it's not required by law, it's another underfunded or non-funded mandate, depending on your district's situation. There's a lot of folks that have concern about data security. I'll admittedly say that that's lower on my list, because the service that's providing this data storage for SED, it certainly has many, many layers of encryption and security beyond what any random school district, or BOSs, or SED would have, I would imagine. But there is a lot of concern about personal info- But there is a lot of concern about personal information being released to the South Side organization that then becomes marketed potentially. And looking at, it's not just student test information, but looking at demographics, student needs, could be socioeconomic status, English language learner, all those subcategories that make up our overall demographics in the district are attached to that information. So there's a movement across the state, we should go beyond that and say nationally, where a number of states have withdrawn their participation out of concerns that parents have. SED has already essentially given them access to that information. They have that information. There's debate over who owns the information that's been shared with this cloud service. And in doing so, there's, there's debate over this ownership, as I said. So we can say, there's a lot of folks that are acknowledging that well, maybe states own the state achievement data because it's a state-required test that our students are taking, but the other data is locally owned. And looking at the demographic information, socioeconomic status, when, by saying locally owned, that can be put into two different hats, one looking, I think, that the district owns it, one looking at that it's the family's private information that wasn't meant to be disclosed. Some of the bigger picture initiatives tied to the portals, and this is the long-range objectives, where you can begin to personalize education for children with software packages, and there's tremendous concern from a number of people across the country that's gonna lead to a lot of direct marketing to families, to school districts, that's going to muddy the waters of what the original intentions were around this. But, so those concerns certainly resonate with me, but I have to say that what comes down to be the bottom line for me is there's a financial piece, the spirit of this not being a funded, funded, fully funded mandate, that we receive Race to the Top funds to the sum of $2,900 a year, and that doesn't cover the costs of this. There have been some revised figures that have been provided, and the earlier numbers that I quoted aren't as painful as those that we're receiving now, but we're anticipating funds after two years down the road, so year three of this, where it become the district's sole responsibility, upwards of $15,000 a year. $15,000 a year may not seem like a huge amount of money within the context of a $54 billion budget, but when you look at the impacts of other things that are happening as relate, related to mandates and impacts, so you're looking at tax cap, tax levy cap shifts being lower next year, which will, could have an impact on the budget. Looking at the park implementation, if the state moves forward with this full-fledged, there's gonna be hundreds of thousands of dollars of technology that we're gonna have to invest in. So when we start to line up all these other large-scale expenditures down the road, to me, and I think to us, $15,000 should be a lot of money that we should consider. And then the other real worry that I have comes down to the management of it, looking at just the, the human resources component, that if technology has a tremendous need, has been mentioned how many times this evening already. This evening, I sent an email to the, the board asking if you wanna attend a, a technology summit with, with some of us in the district, that we know it needs to be a focus of ours, but we have limited personnel there. And I worry about the folks that we have being able to manage another platform. And it's just not the management of a database and uploading information and training teachers, but you have to think of the ultimate, the access that after a year or so, this becomes a connection with the parent community, and there needs to be communication with the parents and training for the parents and password management and so on. So there's, there's a lot of challenges that, that worry me there, and worrying that we can only stretch our, our staff so far. There's, when you look big picture, if you've had the opportunity to look at the webinars, there certainly are features that we can't provide for e-school, through e-school. There are some data analysis tools that are present that are essentially automated for you, where we would have to extract and spreadsheet and manipulate them ourselves. There's some gonna be direct links for teachers and parents that will connect folks with information on Engage New York, which is the state instructional website, but those resources still sit there, but that connectivity would be lost. We would be able to build out eSchool Plus to include additional information, to include more test score information, central, and I don't wanna use this term the wrong way, but running records of our students' internal assessments, to make it a more robust system to be able to inform our instructional decisions, but also to be more informative to students and their families. So I have challenge accepting this as, as a mandate, and I think we should strongly consider whether or not this is the, the right opportunity for us at this time.
Chris, is there any negative impact that parents would, would see if we pulled out of Race to the Top?
I do-
Negative impact that students would see?
No. The, when you think of Race to the Top, Common Core learning standards, park assessment, the new model of APPR are all built into that, but those things are all tied into other regulations and law in New York State, and you still have those requirements. So if we were to opt out of this, there would be no connection with any of those other initiatives, those other mandates, we still have those similar obligations. I, I would, $2,900, quite honestly, that money never even touches our classrooms in, in that concrete way that you would envision any other $2,900 of locally raised tax dollars. It actually goes to a support network team through BOSIs that provides regional programming related to Race to the Top. So that $2,900 realistically just goes into BOSIs' development of workshops and training for school districts.
What was the rationale for signing up for Race to the Top?
Yes, I did, 'cause initially-
I'm gonna defer.
Initially, initially, we voted not to sign up for it, because part of the problem originally was that the state was asking you to commit to this initiative, but they couldn't clearly outline or explain what the commitments were moving forward. So you're kind of committing to the unknown. So initially, we as a district passed, and then what happened is the federal government granted $700 million to New York State. So we had an opportunity to revisit that. Now, you know, at that point, it comes down to $174 million a year for four years. So I guess of the first $174 million, we got $2,900. I'm not sure, which is a joke, but I'm, you know, I don't-
Somebody else is getting $1,000.
Well, most of the money is earmarked for the underperforming inner-city districts, but, you know, most of Race to the Top is trying to bring kids up to efficiency. We don't, we're fortunate, we're not looking at bringing our kids up to efficiency. So that was kind of the history. So we then felt like, it's funny, 'cause I personally was always, it's hard to commit to something when they're not telling you what you're committing to. But we ultimately decided as the district that if we could get some money out of it, it was probably worth committing to. So that was the history of how we ended up, you know, in the Race to the Top.
So there was a general sense that this was kinda, not like free money, but money that the district wouldn't have to be too, you know, or if it was inconvenienced, it would be in a good way, doing good things.
Look, there is-
It was kinda not very well, you, Dr. Corris presumably run that.
Well, if someone's gonna give us a check, I mean, right, if someone's gonna give us $100,000, of course, that is-
If somebody gives me a $100,000 check, I kinda wanna know what they're saying, but I mean, that's a little-
It was unclear. It was unclear at that point.
Well, that was what I'm saying, they clearly, they, they did never outline their expectations for districts. And that was why we didn't commit in the first place, but then we did the second time.
Okay, so there was some kind of timeline. I guess my other question, not a historical question, is, is, this really ultimately involves what parents can get online, schools can get, right? And part of Race to the Top was parents' portal. Are we, are our parents not going to have access to something that they would have access to if we signed up, if we followed through on this?
I believe, I, our understanding is that you're gonna have, we'd be able to provide access to the same level of, of data, the same type of information, just not in as pretty of a format, and without the connectivity to the Engage New York website. There are some analytic tools that are promised, that are to be rolled out down the road, but you're only able to see a little snapshot on a, a monitor as to how effective that may be.
And what data, is, is it child level, the child-level data, or is it?
Yes, yeah, essentially child-level data.
I mean, I gotta, you know, and I spent a lot of time looking at the links that you sent me. In fact, I even asked them to send me some additional information, but, you know, I started to focus on this the other day. I mean, to John's point, I gotta tell you, I guess I'm, I just wonder if we're doing diligence right now before we make this decision. And I know it's late, but I know that this seminar is the 24th. I guess when you're saying it's gonna cost us $15,000 a year, is it clear that the Race to the Top funds are gonna dry out after two years? I mean, everything I read, they just said at the time when the Race to the Top funds end, the districts will be on the hook for paying, and they didn't give a timeframe. Is that-
Yeah, there's, well, that, that's the expectation. There's no reason to believe that there's gonna be more federal funding, you know, and if the federal fundings that be delivered, whether this would be continued funding would be related to New York's application for that money, and whether New York would have a successful application to gain more money.
Right. No, okay, but I guess, so my concern is some of John's, which is that it would be helpful to me if, or I'm even thinking maybe Jesse, and I, I don't wanna take a ton of time, but if, if there was some top line that someone could put together of, you know, what does eSchool data give us? And what, you know, in the future, if they're gonna add capabilities, you know, what's our financial arrangement? I don't, I'm not even sure if we, did we buy it outright? Do we pay them a licensing fee every year? I'm not sure.
We have a licensing fee, and, and we believe that we're-
And what would that licensing fee be? Do we know, or?
It's, I, I, we didn't know what our current fee schedule is.
Okay.
One does not replace the other.
No, but I'm just, from my understanding, I'm looking at the site, was that eSchool data would, eSchool data and some of these sites from Pearson would replace, and in fact, it's my understanding, and again, I, it's hard, again, like you said, there's not a ton there, but it looked like some of the sites would even replace, like Edline and eSchool Plus could be replaced by some of these portals. It's just not clear, I guess.
It's not clear at all, and they, they, I can tell you with confidence, they, we cannot replace eSchool Plus with it, because it does, they don't have the backside grading software aspect of it, and that connects with the report card side of it. So you can duplicate the data-
Are you sure about that? Because some of them have, your ability to see the, the grades and-
Be able to-
Chart your students' transcript over the past year.
Be able to see it, but it doesn't connect with the practical grading side of what we do in the school. So you're uploading that information to populate another database. So it doesn't have currently that connectivity available, that we're going to run our transcripts and our report cards with it now.
Okay, that's, that's been disconnect for me. So in other words, this truly is a parent portal of information for the parents to get, to, 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 to see what their kids' grades are and to compare their children with their fellow classmates, like where they fall on the spectrum. But this does not provide the service on the backend for school districts to provide progress reports and report cards and all of that.
They're not student information systems. It is a completely different system. Or an SIS, a student information system, or your scheduling, everything gets done in your student information system. So some of you, I'm looking, before we switched to eSchool Plus, we used to use something called SASE. And SASE did not have the capability to have a parent portal component to where a parent could access grades, and we used to use something called, oh, EGRY, I don't know, it had another name, and we used to have to upload, so teachers physically would have to do their grades in a separate system. So, and for years, that was what we used until we switched over a couple of years ago to eSchool Plus. So your student information system is your data system for everything related to students, including their schedules, and the grading component is just one component, obviously linked to the report cards and other reporting functions and features of it. That's not the same as a parent portal, and so you need to be able to have both capabilities to function seamlessly.
And how is it that Edline's functions can't be also integrated into one system?
Edline is, all Edline is, is a web, is a webpage. That's all Edline is.
So there's nothing on eSchool data that can integrate those capabilities?
You have to send, well, we used to send our, so when we had SASE, we would send, we would do our grading in a separate grading program, and we would send our grades to Edline, and parents could log into Edline, and they could access their children's grades. But it's because we were, it was a physical upload where we were responsible. It wasn't integrated like it is now.
Um, so, anyway, okay. I, I guess my question then is, are we planning to attend the October 24th meeting?
Jesse and I will be there.
So doesn't it seem like maybe we should at least get feedback from you guys after the meeting before we make this decision, if you're gonna go? I mean, I would certainly love to hear Jesse's assessment of, I don't know, how do you guys feel about that?
I, I would like to hear, I, I, yes, I would like, definitely would like the feedback. So I just wanna be, so what is the purpose of this parent portal from New York State's perspective? What, because there are school districts that don't provide this kind of student information system, so they're trying to give school districts the capability that parents could see their kids' grades? Is that the point?
That's one of the initiatives associated with it, but it, it, there's also that ability to be able to link from, if you're looking at your child's ELA at a particular grade level, that there will be embedded links that, talking about the types of experiences, the learning objectives that children will have at that particular grade level of subjects, and it will directly link you to services that are, resources that will be available on Engage New York.
It seems to me like it's very focused on data analysis, both within your district and compared to the state data, which I don't know if eSchool Plus has that capability, but, you know, they're very focused on you can push a button and get all these different, you know. I mean, that, it, it's pretty impressive, actually, if you're kind of a data person, like just, you know, assuming parents would look at it.
But, but is the policy objective of this, of parents will be aware of what's going on in the schools and be kind of informing consumers, you know, targeted, and that's probably, probably a little-
I think that, absolutely, that's a part of it.
And I think a lot of schools don't have eSchool data, so it seems like the objective is also to keep parents up to speed on what their kids are doing at a computer level.
We're fairly unusual, just so you know. We're actually pretty unusual in the access that we provide. Lots of schools do not provide the level of access to eSchool, that we provide to parents, the regular access to live data. I would say most schools in this area actually don't provide that.
I think it's, it's a good thing, we should, the only thing, not the money you're talking about, seeing really small relative to what we're trying to do on the instructional level, but it's really, the important question is, are, are district parents gonna miss out on something that they would value? And that's-
So, so I guess the other, the ask then from administration would be that if this were to be a decision that we would want, and, and it may be something that you pilot, you could opt in, and if the management is too grand, or there's complications associated with it on the state end, whatever the case may be, you always have that ability to back out down the road. But understand that if we're looking at there being a, a burden from a management standpoint, that when we come to talking about the assessment of our technology needs, talking about staffing budgets, that there's gonna, there may have to be some kind of balance with that.
I guess also, I just wonder if in the future, they're gonna be adding different bells and whistles to the parent portal that at some point might become state mandate? And clearly, like you said, it's free for two years if we wanna opt in, not our management cost, but the cost of the software. What if we, I, I don't know, I mean, we could even opt in and play with it, you know, for-
It's something that wouldn't become accessible to parents for over a year anyhow.
Over a year.
And there's no way to find out if there's, I'm not a computer person, to get e, eSchool Plus to talk to one of these parent portals that it just automatically links?
But not, it is not designed to.
But I guess what I would share, Jesse and I just had a conversation today about another product that he looked at that has the potential, yeah, Young Zou's product, which has tremendous potential. So I, I guess what I'm wondering is, what are the other opportunities that are gonna be coming fast and furious behind this, versus, not related to Race to the Top, but where we would have the flexibility to make the decisions for ourselves without being linked to the, to be honest, the politics of Race to the Top, where we're gonna be able to provide for our parents and our community what we wanna provide, which is that information.
So in other words, like something else besides eSchool Plus and not one of these three parent portals?
A different parent portal, or, or one of those parent portals.
Different parent portal, and, and the, the prospect of that is, in looking at- Different parent portal, and, and the, the prospect of that is, in looking at, uh, and I don't, you, you may have to, you certainly have more knowledge than me, though, but when we talk about having potentially three different systems, right, having Edline, which is the website with teacher putting up information there for kids, looking at eSchool, then looking at one of the portals, this has the opportunity to be able to start to merge these potentially into one platform. Initially, I think we're gonna be looking at the portal, eSchool concept, and then integrating and folding in the web application to become a website service for a school district as well.
Right.
So, it's something that could encompass all of these things, and you would be looking at, you know, one form of parent access, one form of teacher access, um, tools that would have the functionality of all these other items that are being promised. But that's not here just yet entirely to be that package, all inclusive.
And can I ask, we pay for Edline, and we pay for eSchool Plus, and Edgitech is our IT company that we employ to help us with all of this?
Their tech support.
Right.
But they, uh-
So, I'd also like to see what, you know, what we're currently paying. If Jesse, you know, if you come back from the October 24th meeting, it would be interesting also to say, this is how much this costs, this is how much we pay for Edline, and this is how much we pay for eSchool Plus. I mean, I might be the only one, but Edline seems incredibly cumbersome to use in this day and age. I mean, it's just, it's certainly not cutting edge, but it's totally imagination.
And I don't like it for, for many, many reasons. Um, and there's complications there, because all those companies out there are gobbling each other up, and they have these no, in all their settlements, all these non-compete agreements where you can't flip from one platform to another for a number of years. So, if we look at, we can't jump on from this to School World, which is much friendlier, or one or the other, or Blackboard, because they've all now merged into one company. So, um, so the import-export of our data isn't as seamless as it would be. So, there's complications there, but, um, we can look at what those costs are, but those costs, again, are, even if we offer a portal, those, those costs are, are still, let's say, level, and will continue for years to come with the addition of portal costs.
And then, you know, in the last piece, and I, I mean, you all can call me if I'm crazy, but I'm so risk averse, is, you know, if there is any opportunity, I mean, it's, I doubt there is, but I just wanna think twice about if there is any opportunity that over the next three years, we could get any significant kind of funding. Because again, I mean, as more and more schools drop out, there's less schools that are, are looking for a piece of the pie. And if the pie is $200 million a year, I don't know. It, it might be crazy, we might never, so. Just wanna be sure that we really don't feel that we're gonna get any money.
Yeah, so if you drop out of Race to the Top, the, the question, I guess, that, that, that you ask then after that is, if there's more money, can you join back in, right? Um, but I, I think there's a piece, and there's a question mark. I'm not gonna project where we may be.
No, it's just gonna be existing money, if, you know, if they, if they start doling it out more, but-
It's still gonna be formulaic in, in how it's distributed, and let's be reasonable, we're one of the more affluent and one of the higher achieving districts, uh, in the state. So, in, in looking at that, we know we have a long way to go instructionally. We want more for our kids. But when you look at where we fall across the state, we're in, in the top thirty, forty districts in, in the state of New York.
Yeah.
So, we're wealthy, we're high performing, we're not gonna get $100,000. Maybe you get $200, maybe you get $5. If more money comes, so that's if they redistribute the, the existing funds, and then I think you have to look at if the more money is put on the table from the federal government as another round of Race to the Top. Um, I think we have to be reasonable and not expect that, you know, Albany and DC are gonna come deliver us a big game show check at one of our meetings. It's not gonna happen.
Okay.
No, no, but you'll be at the top.
Okay, so I think then, um, in terms of next steps, um,
We'll keep it posted.
It seems like we're leaning toward, um, you know, not opting in with Race to the Top, but we will await the, um, feedback from you from the October 24th meeting, and then we can have a informal conversation.
I know what my homework is Thursday night after the curriculum program.
Okay, uh, next up, taking a long time tonight, is the Board Committee Liaison Reports, Buildings and Grounds, uh, Mary?
Wants to go. You want me to read it?
You go for it.
Okay. An October 7th, the Buildings and Grounds Committee met, and the primary purpose of the business that day was to talk about some significant repairs that we need to make across the district that are primarily related to safety. Uh, safety is obviously our first objective when we're considering, um, capital repairs that need to be made. And, uh, among those, we prioritized, uh, fixing the Main Street School retaining wall, uh, which is the wall that is, um, essentially underneath the playground area that's on Ferris Street.
Ferris, Ferris.
Yeah, it's on Ferris Street, and that wall, as I understand it, is, is problematic.
Yes.
It's not an imminent, imminent danger of, no, but it is a problem, and that needs to be repaired. Um, number two is, uh, emergency lighting upgrades in the Main Street School and also at Dow's Lane. And those, uh, upgrades are costly and necessary to be up to code. Work will also be scheduled to seal trim caps in the high school atrium and cafeteria windows. I don't remember what trim caps are.
I explained it.
Flashing, just essentially, flashing, because if you go, you ever go in, in the spring, you walk into the atrium of the high school, it sounds like you're in a bird sanctuary, because there are hundreds of birds that are nesting in the rooftop.
Oh, wow.
But that work obviously pales in comparison to the emergency lights and the, um, and the wall, uh, repair. Um, the other topic that we discussed was the campus parking update. Dave Cohen has been working with students to resolve the issue. Uh, a plan was created for students who have already received, uh, parking tags to have alternate day parking privileges.
Change the colors of, different tags.
Yep. Um, one of the suggestions we had, that's more of a medium to long-term, um, uh, solution is that, uh, it was suggested that Dr. Harrison contact, um, oh, John, John Cardinal, I wasn't sure what the acronym J-C-O-S was. John Cardinal, to see if there was an opportunity for, um, some of our staff or students to park in their lot. Has there been any new news on that? You've had a, you've had a conversation, right?
Yeah, I've had a, um, a conversation with Father Ashman, um, from Immaculate Seption, um, open to the idea. Uh, but on our end, I think we'd have to look at some, um, possible logistics to, to be able to make it palatable, because they would all, they wouldn't want, uh, student drivers in the lot that are concerned for pedestrian safety.
Right.
They want faculty, um, so we're trying to identify an opportunity to be able to lure some people to have to walk up the hill in the rain and the snow, rather than across a parking lot.
And then as another long-term solution to the parking problem, we talked about the upper lot, uh, which essentially is right up there, um, above the, um,
Gravel lot.
The gravel lot, and that lot is not safe, it's not usable for sort of permanent parking. Um, and what we talked about is that maybe we could make that, um, a more permanent parking lot. But we really can't do that until after the East Field renovation, because many, many trucks will be going up to East Field, and they'll be using that as an entrance. And, uh, so clearly, we can't turn that into a parking lot before that.
When you're saying turning it into a parking lot, what exactly, do you mean, pave it?
Pave it and grade it.
Not necessarily pave it, we could do something similar to the gravel lot, gravel.
Okay, okay.
Right, sorry, yeah.
But, you know, there's no lighting.
Because if you pave, there's a whole chain of issues, you realize that?
Right, there's no, there's no lighting, there's no real safe way for the kids to get up and down, you know, there's a whole host of issues, and not-
But it doesn't have to be paved, correct, okay.
There's like a ramp going from, the gravel lot, then it's-
It's very narrow, yeah.
Yeah, no, no, yeah.
The way, it's, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Um, yeah, so that's basically the report, um, and I guess I could also add that, uh, the campus, um, Campus Hill lighting will be going on hopefully soon, right?
Any day, we're waiting on, we've been waiting on ConEd, um, I have to say that, um, Ms. Miller has been calling them regularly.
Brian Smith is calling them, I understand?
I, yes, I've been in contact with the mayor, um, taking advantage of village connections. Um, maybe, uh, Mrs. Kashkin has been making some phone calls with contacts that she has. Um, it's a challenging organization to penetrate, we've learned.
Yes.
So, they, they gave us a target date of Friday. Um, based upon our experiences over the last two weeks, I am not overly optimistic that Friday will be our reality. Um, but we, uh, are trying to use our resources to make it happen.
Anyone else has some contacts with ConEd? Phil, for it.
No. Please contact me if you do first.
That's it, thank you.
Hey, Ellen Johnson, Law and Research Planning Committee update.
Let me take us off, John?
Uh, sure, if you want, or you, um-
I need to take, I need to take just a little break, yeah.
I mean, you do, yeah. I cannot pass your, I can't, so I'll try to say a few words. So, the long-term planning process, we have been engaged in it, um, for months. Since, since the summer.
Yeah.
Uh, we had, um, we have talked, we've had conference calls and gotten, uh, samples and, uh, proposals from three consulting firms. Um, a firm called Cambridge, something, I forget the full name, in Kansas. Um, a firm called, uh,
PLS, PLC?
PLC.
Sounded like Professional Learning Committee.
Right, they did that, so it's on Google, because of that, but, um, they're based in New York State, although they also have an office in Florida. And they're run by one, primarily run by one woman, who's the initials of PLC, right? Um, and, um, and a firm called Ekra, which is based in Illinois. And, uh, so we've had conference calls with them, Bill, Chris, and I. Um, our general conclusion in, in doing those calls, I think, are unanimous conclusion is that of those three, Ekra is the one that would do the best job for the district of those three, um, in terms of providing what we think is a professional, uh, effort, and being qualified to do that, being, uh, credible and being able to deliver what they, what they tell us they're willing to do. And, um, and being reasonable in terms of things like what they demand of the process, like PLC envisions that you'll get, uh, multiple large task forces in the community working on accelerated schedules on all sorts of topics, and that just does not seem like a realistic thing to happen here at the state. You know, I thought that that was the only aspect in our decision that was part of it. So, um, so I think that, you know, our conclusion that, you know, if, if we go the consultant route, Ekra would be the one we would, as a committee, recommend, and we obviously would have a lot of information of that. Um, the, the, what they do is essentially, um, they will come in, they will have initial conversations with the board and the administration, I believe, then they will set up, um, on that basis, will set up a survey. They will engage in, uh, data analysis, largely test score related data. And they will do some focus groups, not a lot of focus groups, but they will do some focus groups with community members, parents, staff, faculty, administrators, they will talk to all four of them.
Students.
Students, right, students, yeah, that's another important thing. Um, and, um, in reading what they've done, we have, there's, we have two sample, uh, we have samples, two, two districts that they've done that are, are pretty disparate, different districts, one is Spokane and Washington, which is a urban district. It's one of the larger cities in state, um, with a, you know, a socio-economically really culturally diverse population. Um, and we also have a, a district in suburban Milwaukee, known as McQuan, Queensville. And, which is a district that is not, is probably in a number of ways not too dissimilar from, from Irvington. Um, and it's upper, upper middle class, and it's a bigger district than some of the others, you know, that, that, yeah. And, um, so we have, we have those, and they, the, the, from my point of view, that some of the survey stuff looks interesting. Uh, my, my own personal conclusion on, on the data is that it's, um, it's a little hard to believe that the data analysis of the district like Irvington is going to be as much that's useful, because they, they basically look at where are you underperforming or overperforming on your test scores, and does that correlate with different pockets of students, or if you have multiple schools, does it correlate with, you know, school of Eastern McQuan being diverse than the school of Western McQuan? But we don't have, so I think they're gonna find relatively little to do correlations with it. And we don't have incredibly diverse district, or we always say some diversity, because I'm just, I'm not sure if you have enough statistics. And then, focus groups, and then the, but then if you look at the, so then, so that's the, I think if you go and look at the, under this comes a strategic plan, comes a set of objectives, and some, you know, kind of like a, a main objective, and then some subtasks under each of those objectives. Um, my view of this, and Phil is, I think, can speak to his view, though, he and I have talked about it, is that that, those objectives, first of all, they're, they're kind of similar for Spokane and McQuan. Uh, and for McQuan in particular, which are not, which are very different districts. Um, and McQuan's, uh, objectives are the kind of thing that we could probably come up with just by sitting around and talking for an hour or two, uh, because they're kind of general and, you know, enhance curriculum opportunities, make every, you know, let every student achieve his best, that he's best, that he deserves best, that everything. So, you know, so there, the, I think it more comes down to, that the, the benefit to consultants is likely to be more in process, I think, you know? In putting us on a timeline, a consultant would come in and say, okay, you're gonna do this, and you need, I'm here, I'm showing up. It's like, so you got a contractor, you're gonna work on your house, and things you put up, and then it's done, they're there to do the work. Consultant would be here to do the work, and we need to have this strategic plan done, for our own self, and so it's timeframe rather than having to follow on our agenda. Uh, that's one thing I think is helpful. Uh, secondly, there is a structure that Ekra can put in place to get input from stakeholders, from the community members, from students, from staff, that we may not necessarily do as well after our devices. I think we do well with the board and the administration, we, you know, but we wouldn't necessarily do well with input from others. That, that to me is the benefits, and that's like what I do as a drawback, but I, I don't want to presume to speak for Phil and his workers. I think that the, the output risks, partly because you're getting input from the community, I think that the community will have a lot of different views, and you end up, and taking the average, you know, like. Uh, that, that I think that the output and our goals might end up being kind of watered down relative to what we would want to, which is probably set a high bar, push to make the district better, and, you know, to reach for something beyond what we have now, and to push our staff and administrators beyond where, you know, otherwise they could go. And to allow the finances and the, the buildings and whatever else to follow from there. And whatever we do in the, in the, with the so-called strategic planning process, it doesn't get us to a number of areas that are important part of long-term planning, uh, like finances, like what are we doing with our buildings and grounds, like what do we wanna do in terms of even evaluation curriculum issues? That kind of thing, which we'd still end up having to do, even if we're trying to, we could still have to do those ourselves. So, that's the trade-off. Um, yeah, I think I wanna present that, I don't wanna weigh in maybe yet on what I, what I'd be, what I'd be reading. Or I think we should come out on this, but it's not, I think that- what I'd be reading, or I think we should come out on this, but I think that's, at least in my view, what we've got when it comes to that.
John did an excellent job summarizing that. I would just add that, in my mind, it became an issue of if we want a democratic process, where we want to get feedback from the community, from stakeholders, if we want to set up a process where we are formally asking people to contribute to the process, I believe that we do need a third party like ECR to help us do that. With everything else that we have in our agenda, I just cannot imagine that our district employees, three people in the room here tonight plus building administrators, would be able to do that work easily. It would just, it would be very difficult, I think, to set up those processes. The alternative to having a democratic process is to do what we did with our district goals right now, over the last couple of weeks, which is that we sit here in public meetings and we talk about the strategic plan, the strategic goals, the strategic plan initiatives, and we would obviously expand the district goals into being somewhat broader and more long-term, and we could do that here. The one piece that I think that I'm looking forward to getting definitive agreement on is what, how do we define the success metrics of our school district? What exactly, what exactly does success look like and what can we agree on and commit to on paper? Because I feel that the ambiguity that exists in our district about exactly that point, it makes a lot of our discussions that we have challenging, because we don't know what we're trying to deliver at the end of the day. I think-
Do you mean success, or do you also mean priorities?
I mean success. In other words, is our, do we define success as that every child goes to the college that they want to go to? I don't know. Do you define success that we are at the 98th percentile in every test that the state offers? You know, how do you define success? And having spoken, and I'll use his name even though he's gone, but Dr. Scott Mosenthal, I know that he defined success in his own mind very differently than a lot of other parents that I've spoken to, because in his mind, he was very much trying to educate children in a wide variety of ways that went well beyond just testing well and academic performance. And I hate to paraphrase him, especially when he's not here, but I just use that as an example that, you know, on that personal level, you know, he, our high school principal for so many years, really felt strongly that it wasn't just about testing and it wasn't just about sending kids to college. That's very different than a lot of different parents that I know. And so I think that using a third party, using ECR with their data focus and also because they're impartial, we have a better chance of achieving that very difficult thing, defining our success metrics. I think if we sit here in this room alone, not alone, but with obviously an audience, that we will have a harder time doing that because we don't have the expertise to do that. We've not, if we, if it was so easy, we would have done it before and we haven't, and I'm think that having a company help us do that is very important and will drive a lot of key decisions a district has to make going forward. So that's the, that's my feeling about why we should use a consultant. I think John summarized some of the downsides clearly, the goals and strategic objectives that are in the McQuan, Theensville, and Spokane, it was, they were disturbingly similar, and I think we would have to work hard to do exactly what John said, which is to push ourselves and our community to define our goals above and beyond the average. We have to know that going in, that if you let them sort of just take feedback and manage to an average, that we're not going to get what we want, which is strategy imperatives that are driving our district to be at a higher level. So there's a responsibility that comes with using that.
Is there, can I give this an idea of the cost?
Twenty-five thousand.
Twenty-five thousand.
Yeah. Plus, I presume, travel.
That includes all focus groups and that's all on-
Well, it doesn't include their expenses-
Right.
... coming from Chicago. Yeah, I mean, my feeling, I, I'm not sure I agree with Phil that, I share Phil's optimism that ECR will help us define the sort of excellence we're looking for. I have no evidence that they can do that or would be able to.
So they said that.
Yeah.
Remember, what did we ask the next question?
They said yes.
Yeah.
So, you know, I have a tough time, I'm really convinced that if we go to the consultant route, we, Chris has looked at consultants, and we've looked for others, these are the ones we, that we're identified, you can speak to that process, that we care about that. They're the right, they're the best of the bunch. We did talk to an organization that Robin had a connection with that really deals with much more, you know, kind of people with high-powered consulting backgrounds, but they, first of all, they mainly deal with government grants and other performing districts and charter schools and those sorts of things. They don't work with affluent suburban districts, and they would, they would charge us a lot of money.
They do, for like ten times the money.
Yeah, yeah. And I'm really interested, but I can't see the community supporting that.
Two-hundred thousand dollar expenses.
Starting point was two-fifty.
Two-fifty.
Bellwether.
I thought it was three hundred.
From two-fifty to three hundred, bizarre.
It helped them break into a new market. So, you know, but I, I still am really skeptical that we, we need this, we need to go through a whole complicated process to come up with a set of strategic objectives. You know, we have a, this district has a mission statement, or whatever it's called, which, something, you know, what is it? It used to be every child should achieve his academic potential, something along those lines, which is great, it's not qualitative, but it's kind of the right idea, and you can develop a three-year plan based on that. I don't know what, I still, you know, I don't want to get in the way of using a consultant if that's what people want to do, I don't think it'll hurt us to do it, but I'm not really convinced there's a huge amount of benefit to doing this. You know, I think we'll get some interesting information out of the process. I think, again, I said, the process and the surveys will be interesting information to have. I kind of think that if we really care about developing a long-term plan and a strategy, we don't really need a consultant to be able to do this. And I don't think it needs to take a lot of anybody's time.
For us to do it myself.
Yeah, for the administration. It doesn't seem to be that it needs to be all that complicated.
What about the democratic process, being structuring focus groups, a survey, that kind of thing?
I would say we wouldn't do that. We would, we, you know, we're, we would leave, definitely we would be open to the community to get all the cameras we could get, we could hold open meetings, which we do, it is democratic in that we're representative, it's democracy.
What about getting the point of view of students and teachers, which is, you'd think that that's a little bit more important since they're kind of on the ground, but particularly students, obviously.
Yeah, I mean, I think where students can really help us is if we find out there's an aspect of, if there are weaknesses that we just don't know, maybe there is. Yeah, that could be a-
Or surveys of recent alumni, recent grads.
Yeah.
By the way, that's-
And that's something that would be great to have, so, that's what I'm saying, I think that some of the stuff we get along the way from a consultant might be, might be surveys. I really think that surveys are likely to be what's interesting.
I think it seems like they could certainly, you know, what you said, they could provide a structure and they could do certain things, but it seems like perhaps for us, we don't need all of it. I mean, do you think it's possible to talk to them about some sort of a limited role, where maybe they're, I mean-
It's already a discounted fee.
So they wouldn't, it's not worth their while to come in for less, smaller-
Their nominal fee is thirty-five, and they discounted us to twenty-five.
Okay, so, and you don't think they would do like, to do half of the project they would do?
I don't think so, but-
I don't know what you would consider eliminating, because I think there's such interconnectivity among the work that's being done.
I would eliminate the data analysis, because I just don't see the value.
I don't think we should presume that we're not going to get the value out of it.
I'm just kind of, you know, having looked at what, they haven't convinced, I'm gonna say they haven't convinced me that they're getting done.
What are our next steps?
That I, my recommendation would be that we engage ECR, establish a, that we would move forward in establishing a very aggressive timeline with them to kick off this important process. I think there's significant value in the community engagement, and I fear that if we were to develop a plan ourselves, it would be representative of what we desire for our school district, and I think they will be lofty, meaningful objectives, but we all kind of work for the community here, and I think everybody needs to have some influence and connection with this, and I think ECR will do a fine job with it, and I think, end of the day, I think we'll be satisfied with the product. So initial, with board's consent, we can make contact with them, we can, contract amount is maybe consistent with something that I could authorize, dollar amount, but I think it would be better to have the board approve it be a resolution.
Great, you didn't read it on the set off?
I actually, for a variety of reasons, I like the idea of going with consultant, I think it's more impartial. I think the value appearing from the community and from students, I just think that if it's an outsider analyzing all this, it's done through a different lens, and I think it would look different if we used an outside consultant, cleaner perhaps is more of the word I'm looking for. And given some of our own personal goals and what I know this year is going to look like, I kind of feel like if we don't hire a consultant, this is going to, this possibly will go on the back burner in terms of priorities, and I really do think it's important that this is accomplished. So I feel like if we do hire the consultant, it guarantees that this goal will be met, that we will get it done, given everything else that I know we're going to have to tackle this year.
Is there, do they give us a timeline in their meetings with them, like if, you know, if we were to bring them on, say, next week? Is there a timeline at which point they will hand us the finished product? I mean, I hear consultants and I just get scared that we're going to get in a situation where, you know, a year from now, we'll just be getting the project.
No, no, no. I would say that they were originally talking about December, February process, is that what you know?
So like, two, five months?
Like four months.
It could be September through April, that timing's great, something like that.
I guess my other concern I share with John, which is, having been to this before, I really want a plan that we can use. I want something that we're going to be able to implement and move forward with. I don't want a, you know, page after page after page of, you know, words that are, it looks beautiful, and it sounds impressive, but it goes on the shelf and it really, and you look back and you think, wow, that was a lot of time and effort to put it together, but it's not an actionable or really, it's not a really operationally focused, I don't think it has to be operationally if it's a strategic plan, but it doesn't give us a roadmap for getting things done.
Well, you both saw two samples, did you feel like they were good goals, you know, a good report for those districts? Did you feel they got something for their money?
Let me, I don't think so. I just want to read McQuan, Theensville strategic goals. Goal one, maximize the academic achievement and personal growth that each McQuan, Theensville did. Goal two, achieve more effective decision-making through improved systems and processes. And they're specific objectives, I just don't want to play with that. Goal three, ensure physical stability and appropriate resources for programming and facilities. Goal four, ensure climate and culture to sustain excellence.
Yeah, it's interesting, I mean, those sound so generic to me. I mean, the one thing that I actually shared with Phil earlier is, I was looking at, Hastings had a strategic plan that they posted on their website, and it was interesting to me because what they did is, if you can read in the language, they said, the quote was, each goal in the plan is grounded with the district philosophy statement, and the strategic plan builds on the existing district goal. So their strategic plan took each district goal and made them a goal in a strategic plan, and then they went through and they act, and they outlined a series of strategies that kind of broke down the goals into more manageable pieces. For example, ensure every classroom is nurturing, interactive, and learner-centered, responding to the varied strengths, affinities, and needs of our students. Okay, that's a pretty generic goal. And then they went down and they had at least six strategies under that, which said, you know, create a new organizational structure, design and implement more relevant and more purposeful assessment modules and processes. I just, it was very usable to me, how they did it.
You're looking at an action plan, it sounds like, that would grow out of the objectives.
That's right.
And I think to John's point, the objectives are, or the goals are as firm or as soft as you let them be. And, and I think looking at, maybe that's what those communities wanted, you know, maybe that was lofty for them. I don't know, but this is our process and we set expectations for what we want, and if we have these expectations of ourselves in leading this district, well, they need to be reflected in that end product, and through that process, if we really believe that in this process, ECR will walk out and tell us that they saw this from us.
But I'm sorry, I believe what?
But if we want certain lofty, very strategic, very poignant goals, that ECR should be able to see that through the process.
I think, I sort of, I agree with Chris, John, I don't think it's necessarily fair to say that because those goals sound so bland and, and nonspecific, that necessarily means that we end up in the same place. And I don't think that necessarily means that ECR, as an organization, is bound to do that, because it's circumstantial evidence. I would, but I-
Yeah, although it is the sample, it does, right?
Right, but fair enough, I mean, I think the, there's a burden on, there's a burden on us to, to lead and to, to ensure that what we develop is what the board wants. My desire to use ECR was perfectly stated by Maria, which is simply that I have grave doubts, John, that we will actually accomplish this at all unless we use a third party to help us. We don't have, we just looked at the schedule earlier tonight, right? A schedule that we started adding things to, because there were meetings that were happening that were at the same time as budget discussions, and we wanted to have those meetings earlier. I literally don't see when we would even get to this in our board meetings unless we started meeting weekly instead of bi-weekly.
Yeah, I agree, I think the only way we're ever going to get is to use an outside consultant, and I'm thinking maybe there's a way for, for us as a board to meet with a consultant as well, all of us, and then, or have them talk to us one-on-one, however, so they get a real sense as to, you know, what we'd like to get out of it.
I think that would be correct. My understanding is that would be correct.
That's actually how it starts.
Part of the process, yeah.
Because John asked, when we met with them last, like, how do you start this process off?
I mean, as worried as I am, I just don't see an alternative, to be honest. I think it's the, you know, it's the only way we're ever going to get it done this year.
I think that's fair. All my concern, you know, I think it will be on everybody's shoulders to make this meaningful process, you know, and I don't think they'll do it, I don't think after their own prices they'll do it. We have to, we have to stay engaged. We have to, you know, stay engaged.
I'm confident with our-
This is, this is kind of committing ourselves to that.
If there was-
I really pretty much agree on where we might go, you know? Alice might be up and going to disagree a little bit on where we are, I'm gonna get there.
Okay, so I'm gonna move the meeting forward. I think we certainly have majority, I think we have a unanimous agreement that we're gonna move forward with the consultants that you guys have identified. And I guess you'll just, at the next board meeting, maybe report in as to where we are.
Yeah, we'll have a resolution on the agenda. That's what my objective would be.
Do we need to wait for the board meeting for you to engage them? Can't you move forward with them and?
Well, we can begin process and planning. There's no question.
Yeah, it seems like it would, just given the nature of this process, we ought to have a formal board resolution.
I agree. But I, I'll, I'll reach out to Ekra tomorrow, have the initial conversation and start talking timelines, details. They'll give you an opportunity to publicly vote no, right?
I'm not, I don't think I'm gonna vote no. I think, I think, like, I mean, I told you, I, I laid out the fact that this is a way to kind of get it settled.
Okay, so, next up is community comment. I gotta tell you personally, I would like to suggest that in the future, since these agendas have really shifted over the last few months, we move community comment up forward a little bit. I just feel like if people come out here, they shouldn't have to sit on line thirty if they have a question. It just, it, it used to be that we just get right to a community comment, and now we're getting so many things before it.
Yeah, I, I want to say that tonight was an anomaly in that we're just getting to this point after two hours. It's normally within the first twenty, thirty minutes of a meeting, so-
Our reports usually don't take that long, usually work.
No, but if we, I, I just definitely think it should be before business of the board.
That point is taken.
Right, that's my suggestion. I mean, we could talk about it during the week and figure it out.
No, I don't think, I don't know if there's a need to. The point is taken, and like we said, we didn't expect this to be at nine-thirty when we still have a presentation after this.
I'm very similar.
Yeah. Anyway, so sorry, apologies to anybody if they were sitting here waiting, but any, or they left, a few people left already. But any comments from the community on items that appear on the agenda? Nope. Okay. Oh, one, two, okay.
Richard Cole. I have a question for Dr. Core. In terms of the APPR, I know that some of that stuff was adopted around the time that I came into the district, so I may not have been around for the history of it. You said that each teacher is observed four times. Is there anything that looks at the cost of that, the cost benefit analysis? I mean, I know other districts where the chairman of the department looks at the teacher once and somehow they move forward just fine. And what's the cost of having four different people? I mean, there's obviously a, there's a cost to having four people view these teachers. And what is the, and, you know, the benefit of that?
So it's not four different people. It's one administrator is assigned to a teacher for the year so that they're building a relationship with the teacher all year long.
Okay.
We did used to have our department chairs do some of the observation, but as a result of the new regulations, we're not allowed to do that anymore. So in order for the administrators to observe teachers, we have to be recertified each year to evaluate, I should say to evaluate teachers, not observe. So administrators now have to be recertified each year to be trained, to be trained for this purpose of evaluation. So I don't know about a cost, I, I, I don't know in terms of having four observations in a year. I don't, I don't know how I would attribute a cost to that. It's part of the administrator's responsibilities.
So does that, does the new regulation from, this is from the state you're talking about? Does this, does this new regulation, did that cause us to have to hire more administrators? Or is this just, just an added responsibility to existing administrators?
So that's a complicated question, I guess, in the sense that I wouldn't say that it caused us to hire more administrators. As you might remember, we had lost our administrator at Dow's Lane and our assistant principal position. And the loss was far greater than just the observation and evaluation of teachers. It was really in the daily running of programs there. So I would say we brought back that position and some of that position is clearly supporting the APPR. But I would say that our goal is around developing effective instruction in classrooms. And whether we do four observations or not, administrators have to be working with teachers for us to be successful. So I'm not sure I would connect directly with the APPR. I don't know if that answered your question.
My last question along that lines is, my, someone of the board members brought it up, but I didn't, I don't remember who. But what if someone's not performing well? What is the end result there? I mean, I know you said there was a follow-up discussion, but to me that's-
That was my brilliant question. Thank you.
That was seemed, to me, rather vague. I mean, if a teacher is not performing up to standards, is the, are we, there's a follow-up discussion? And if that doesn't change anything, do we then let them go? Or what is the process to, you know, try and maintain the best teaching staff that we can?
Yeah. I would say the, the last piece before, I mean, letting someone go is far more complicated than this conversation can allow for. But teacher improvement plans are part of, and have always actually been part of our APPR. When we refer to the new APPR, that's the last couple of years. But we've, we've had an APPR in place for thirteen, I'm here thirteen years, thirteen years. So a teacher improvement plan has always been a part of our process when we wanted to improve instruction, beyond the informal, which is really what I was referring to. I think as building adminis, as administrators, we immediately put a plan in place. And that is additional visits to the classroom, additional observations when necessary, targeted strategies and support, identifying someone who, a teacher who might be able to support another teacher, especially for a younger teacher or a new teacher, versus sometimes using a consultant who we need to bring in to support a teacher if necessary. So I think we have a lot of strategies. What I was referring to when Phil said that was that there's an immediate follow-up to any classroom visit, which then would define the next steps.
Is there any parent input into the teacher evaluations or that process? No?
No, I mean, there's always parent feedback, which, you know, obviously, we, we hear parent feedback, both formally, sometimes informally. But they're not part of the evaluation process.
But I, but I would say though, that, you know, if you get a critical number of letters about a certain issue, then I'm assuming you kind of go into the evaluations with that in mind also, wouldn't you? I, I mean, I just, I guess, okay, so let me, let me-
That's a very big, that's a-
Let me rephrase that.
Okay.
I think, personally, I like to think that the community does have a voice and that if they voice their concerns, then their, their concerns will be heard and factored into the process.
I guess what I, I want to just draw the line to, factored into the evaluation. I think that was the piece, absolutely, parents are heard. And I think, and I did say that, I said, both formally and informally, we do get feedback and it does play out. But I guess when you say the evaluation, I mean, that's a yearly process and there's a lot of information that goes into it. But our goal obviously is to have parents, you know, be satisfied and feel that children are getting-
Thank you.
-appropriate instruction.
Hi, oh, sorry. Hi, I'm Catherine Johnson. Hi. Oh, I just want to say something about the consultant. And of course, I'm completely unenthusiastic about the idea of a consultant. That just sounds horrifying to me. And, you know, I'm speaking as a veteran of, you know, the community conversation and the form of assessment consultant. And I think we had a PLC consult, we've had a bazillion consultants. What you get back is what John read, you get jargon back. And I, I think it's fair to say that, you know, I represent a faction of the community that just doesn't want to hear more jargon. Now, Phil's point, I think, is, is really important, because I've been thinking of this myself, democratic input. You are all Democratic elected, so you definitely represent the community, you get feedback from the community. But in fact, you don't have a formal mechanism for doing it. So that's, I, that's the one issue that really, well, there's two issues that hit me that are sympathetic to Phil's point. I mean, to me, I think you can do that, I, I don't know how the PTSA feels this day, but I always thought their forums were fabulous. I think an effort needs to be to bring in people who aren't parents, so the rest of the community. But every forum, PTSA forum I ever went to, you know, collected real information, organized it well. So anyway, I think there are mechanisms. The other issue is time. And here's my suggestion on that. You know, of course, I keep pushing this fellow, Richard Dufour, who ran a high school like ours, much larger. So that's a, that's an issue. It's like ten times as large. I think it was a four thousand person high school. But back in the eighties, he established a goal, first he actually convened the whole community, no consultants. I mean, he convened the entire community, he took testimony from everyone. A lot of sort of heartfelt parental crying testimony, because it was a big high school. So there was, back then, they talked about kids falling through the cracks. So they got lots of that kind of testimony from parents. He then established a goal of continuous improvement. So rather than having to quite define, okay, is everybody getting into a college? Or it's people getting into a program they want, or it's certain grades or whatever? He just said, we're just gonna start from where we are, we're going to get better. That was defined, like, say AP and ACT scores. That. And they have actually done that for twenty-five years. They're actually still, you know, kind of climbing. So here's my suggestion, just in terms of hiring a consultant. It would be, I don't know how much Dufour is charging, probably an arm and a leg. You know, when the consultant came in to, what, for superintendents? His whole reaction to Richard Dufour was, that guy's making a boatload. So, you know, that was my first, okay, so Richard Dufour is a really rich consultant. Anyway, I don't know what he's charging, but it seems like, is there some way to get someone like that in first, before hiring consultant, to see how they did it? This is the guy who actually did it in a school like ours, to see how he did it? I guess my last point is just, I sort of, I don't know who Robin talked to, but I would almost rather spend two hundred and fifty thousand on a major consultant than, you know, these twenty-five thousand dollar people. These are vendors and they're gonna give those goals. I don't think, I think that's what they're geared up to do. Anyway, that's my thought.
To follow up on what Ms. Johnson said, I work for one of these consultants. Myra Blackman Associates down in Athens, Georgia. It was a group that specifically worked for not-for-profit boards. And I can tell you, they talk to people, they run all the numbers, and they have these prefab answers they just spit out. And for the most part, as a former associate, I'm sure she'd assume me if she watched the tape, it's garbage. I've worked for several of these consultants, actually, doing statistical analysis and running focus groups. And a lot of this stuff, you get what you pay for. And when you get one of these twenty-five thousand, you'd be better off, honestly, hiring a temporary person at twelve bucks an hour to work in your office to organize community forums and just get the input that way. It seems to me, what I'm hearing from the board, is that the board doesn't have the time to do this themselves and they need some external force to help them do that. Well, why pay twenty-five thousand dollars for some prefab spreadsheets and charts when you could hire a temporary worker to come into the office for twelve, literally twelve bucks an hour? That would help the PTSA and other groups organize community forums and run some, you know, SPSS charts for you. It really doesn't make a lot of sense to me.
Any other comments from the community? Okay. Okay, next up is the consent agenda.
Is there any more way we can get more feedback from the community on the consultant issue? If we're gonna be doing something that's gonna make some people upset?
There's a lot of people upset.
I am not sure what the ask is. I think we're in a position where we-
Maybe just to make sure that people know where we decided to start making this process or-
Certainly be in the notes for the meeting.
I think this is a decision for the board to make at this point. And, and the decision is whether we want to engage the, the community in this process.
It's interesting, because Richard brought up an interesting point, which is, you know, we could try to find one kind of super fabulous individual who could maybe pull the whole thing together. I, I mean, I clearly, personally, as I said, think we need an outside consultant to make this happen.
Yeah, I, I think there is another district in Westchester that I know of. Yeah, people, also, this is done by a different ways, I don't want to, it's just a question.
So, I'm assuming, we're gonna move forward, put a formal resolution on the agenda at the next meeting. And we have two weeks to-
But could this, for example, be just in the weekly district email? If we have this meeting and make sure that people understand this is part of the process?
Sure.
People are not, you know, I'm not down on roads and, whoa, district, I have consultants, if you'd like.
Do, may I ask that you gentlemen give Elaine a paragraph on the subject?
No problem.
Okay. Okay, so moving on to the consent agenda. Motion to, personally, I have a motion to approve the consent agenda. And then one week comments, and then we'll take a vote. How's that?
So I need to pull out one matter?
Okay.
Is that, I don't know what I should do there.
Fine. I don't do this, Bob, you should do it.
You can necessarily pull it out, can you?
I could, we can have a separate vote, because I don't have a-
Okay, which one do we want to pull out?
Um, the, item one.
One is the underwriter for the bounds. Anyone else? It would be, the consent agenda would be seven point one through ten. So seven point one through nine point four, multiplying out to ten. Anything else?
No.
Okay. So a motion to approve consent agenda, item seven point one through nine point four.
Sub moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries for zero. Comments on item ten?
I have no comments. I have some very-
Just want to do a separate vote, given the size of the-
And I did, just so you know, I had some discussions with, which are not the reason I don't agree with myself. I did have some discussion, I had a discussion today with Bob Kerr from China. Just clear out some things I didn't understand about how they did the calculations and, you know, the reason of the comfortable. I understand that, that's all I said.
Okay, so a motion to accept item ten point one.
Sub moved.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries for zero.
No, three, zero.
Three.
Are you abstaining or?
He's abst, he withdrew himself from the vote.
Oh, I didn't hear that.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, motion carries three, zero. Okay, number eleven, presentations. We are up to district goals.
Make that single presentation, around the presentations. But are we ready? Do you want to take a few minute recess or?
Let's go for it.
I think we're approaching the finish line. We, we set out to, as we said before and referenced before, to develop some meaningful district goals, goals that are gonna motivate us, goals that are gonna be realistic and have impacts on our kids' learning experiences each and every day. And looking at where we are now, there's certainly progress has been made over the last two board meetings, where we started off with brainstorming ideas, looking at a variety of concepts, turning those ideas into goal statements. And what I've done since the last meeting is to try to, really try to melt this information down into a more streamlined set of goals, goals that may not be ultimately what we look to adopt next week, but goals that, in my mind, begin to reflect the collective thinking of, of the Board of Education. And in doing so, we came up with three different goal areas. The first was looking at curriculum and instruction. Another was a facilities goal and, of course, a long-range planning goal. And in doing so, we, I crafted these statements that, as I said, tried to capture the thinking of the board over the last two meetings. So our first objective is to enhance curriculum and instruction to promote academic excellence. And in doing so, you can see we have a suggestion or a recommendation of five different sub-goals or objectives associated with the goal. And the first is looking to align curriculum, using certainly common core standards and providing the necessary professional development to support that initiative. Related to that, looking to document our curriculum and rubicon outlets. Of looking for essential areas where we need for some improvement and developing a plan to identify those areas of improvement and how we will address them. To look at our use of, of- To look at our use of technology and its related curriculum. That could be a particular class, a particular program. Or it could be how we're integrating it through other areas of study. But to deepen student understanding and the application of information technology. And then to improve curriculum communications with the community in order to create a better understanding of the changes in our curriculum and to encourage greater homeschool partnerships. And I think hopefully you're starting to see some of that already in the discussions that we had tonight, the presentations that we'll be having throughout the year, the program on Thursday, and so forth. With that said, we move on to looking at our facilities goals. We want to address facility needs, ensure district buildings and grounds are conducive to programmatic needs. Continue to utilize the results of the space utilization study to determine the most appropriate use of the existing school facilities. Develop a plan for campus athletic fields and facilities to address safety and usage needs. Evaluate existing needs with utility grounds to provide for safe, efficient operations and assure that the school facilities will serve as needed. And then finally, propose long-range planning goal. May sound a little redundant to the conversation that we've had, but we want to develop long-range plans that are gonna guide and inform the work across the district that will occur for years to come. We wanted to find, probably most importantly, the indicators of successful school experience. We want to refine that mission and vision, and looking to engage our stakeholders in that process. We want to provide for meaningful instructional and strategic objectives to inform the efforts of the board, administration, faculty, and staff. Evaluate our financial health, the viability necessary to inform future financial decisions, and to identify opportunities for enhancing the district's operations and infrastructure. So I guess the conversation to have is, does this accurately reflect our discussions? Does it provide the direction, motivation that we're looking for? Does it provide some clear messaging about what we value? But ultimately, are, there's still any edits or modifications to be made? That said, board members have a hard copy before you to help maybe inform some of our conversation here. But with that said, do we want to start at the top and look at our curriculum and instruction goals? And how does this reflect what we've talked about over the last month? How does this reflect where our objectives are? And if unclosely interpreted, the communication that we've shared, is there editing, tweaking, modification of language that would make these goals more concise or to better communicate the dialogue or objective that we have?
Well, I had a couple things that jumped out at me when I was going through this. I'm kinda gonna work off John's copy. Does it matter? I guess, kinda going down the list, to me, the Common Core learning standards, adopting them isn't really, I guess I view that as operational. We talked before about operational versus kind of lofty goals. I just think, to me, that really is more of something that's an expectation that we're going to adopt the Common Core. At the end of the year, I don't really think we should look back and say, wow, we did a great job. I mean, we did, we did a great job, we adopted the Common Core, but it's not above and beyond. To me, there's kind of the base level, and there's above and beyond. And so, I kind of view that, to me, as a little bit more of the operational, kind of, inherent in the expectations that we're gonna meet the state standards. You know, obviously, the whole idea of going above is more along the lines of what I would like to see. And then, moving forward on the instructional need, where you kind of melded that in with the identify essential areas of curriculum instructional need. You know, I think that we had a lot of discussion about, kind of, how important the instructional piece is to the overall success of the students. And I almost think that deserves its own mention. And I think I personally would like to see it be a little clearer as to, you know, our goal is to raise the bar across the board on a level of instruction.
We're gonna have to have another conversation, though, because we're saying, raise the bar, looking for greater success. Does that...
How do we define success? I mean, that gets back to what you said, it's just, yeah, I mean, but this is, you know, I'm just kinda trying to go down and give you my thoughts on it. And I just, or maybe it's just even calling out the instructional piece and making that its own standalone goal, as opposed to linking it to the curriculum and instructional?
One thing that, and I, the audience, I guess, doesn't have the edits that I suggested, but we have them somehow. One thought I didn't put in there is, it also, to me, connects to what are we doing with this APPR or whatever we're supposed to implement? That gets to instruction. It gets to, how do we, because APPR is evaluating how our instruction...
Oh, so you're saying, take the results and...
Well, I'm not sure, I'm not, I don't have in mind specifically what we would do with that. But, you know, it feels like we need to make, I don't know, to make our teaching... Instructional process.
I was gonna ask maybe a question of clarity for both Robin and John. Hard to separate curriculum and instruction. Two, one is an object, the other is the delivery of the object. So the two are paired. So if we're looking at problems with student achievement, limited student growth, where do we have to go? We have to go to the lens of the delivery of our program and what the program is, the resources that are there. I have a hard time in looking at this. I'm looking at this, and I see that, so this is a statement, an objective. And then, we're gonna have essentially, I picture like a website, a dropdown here of what our action plan would be to do this. And we would identify areas. There was conversation about ELA at particular grade levels in our first discussion. That may be a target area that we're looking at here. And we would have a very specific actionable item that would be associated that would grow out of an action plan that we would develop as administrative team to address these goals.
I don't see the, I mean, I see them linked as in, you know, they're both delivered in the classroom. But I actually think you could have incredible teachers with a very weak curriculum, and you could have a weak curriculum, I mean, you know, incredible curriculum with weak teachers. And I think they're very unique. I don't actually see them, they're related in terms of they're all influencing the student, and it's all one big pot. But as terms of a goal, I see them as distinct. That's me.
Yeah. And then, if I'm not mistaken, there is also research that, you know, following teachers is what...
There's no question, but what are the teachers teaching? What are the teachers teaching is the question I'd ask.
Yeah.
And it's challenging that, because when we go and look at that, if you want to go into a classroom and be diagnosticians, and we want to come in and remedy what particular ailments exist which relate to student growth, you have to look at both of those items.
You do, I wanna look at both. I just think each one personally deserves its own bullet point. And, you know, I guess, you know, we've talked a lot about inconsistencies across curriculum, which in some way is, you know, inconsistencies class to class. And the curricular piece, I almost think from an analytical perspective, is much easier to address in terms of the inconsistency issue. The teaching, you know, it's the art of teaching, it's an art. It's, you know, some people are born to it, some people learn it, and some people struggle to be good their whole life. And I think it's, you know, certainly for me as a board member, it's my goal that I would like to hear less of the, oh, my God, I got that person, and more of the, wow, pretty much anyone I get, I'm pretty okay with. I would like to, that's my outcome.
Is that a long-term? I think the instructional need is more of a long-term goal. I don't think it's something that can be accomplished in 2013, 14.
I think...
Well, maybe, though, if it's a long-term thing, we do the first of whatever, say it's three steps. First of the three steps.
I hesitate to make it a long-term goal, because then nobody takes responsibility of it, to make things happen.
No, that's not true. The long-term, the strategic plan is gonna have a whole set of...
It's just, I think it's so important. I mean, frankly, if you ask me the most important thing, I gotta tell you, I think the instructional piece is, to me, the number one most important thing of all of these goals we're putting together.
Can I ask, where do you not see that?
I don't, I see it buried with curriculum.
She's, all she's saying is she wants to break out, identify essential areas of curricular and instructional need. She just wants to separate those two and presumably, you know, enhance the language around instructional.
Robin, do you have any wording in mind of what you would write? If you were to write a goal like this, what would it be? I'd like the idea of what percent, but I don't have any idea.
Yeah.
Because I sit here, what, you know, what's it say?
You know, I'd probably go look at, see what some other districts have done, and then come back with some suggestions off the top of my head.
I wanna push us to solve this tonight, though.
You by them?
I wanna push us to try to resolve this tonight.
We are...
I don't wanna keep kicking a can down the road. I think it's important that we come to terms with this.
I'm gonna, how come what I read is different? Oh, you know what? I'm sorry, the one that I got, that I read at home, didn't have all, there's some other stuff right here that I don't remember seeing. Okay. I, I don't know.
I mean, I'm satisfied because it's in there. And I don't think, I think the administration and the district knows, based on the fact that it's there. I'm not sure that breaking it out necessarily makes it more important, unless there's something specific around how we're going to identify that instructional need that is gonna be different by breaking it out. So I think it's, we're kind of wordsmithing, which is what this is all about. But I'm not sure that on that particular, I mean, I think there are other suggestions that have been made along the way that are not in there, that are probably... Because it's just, it is there, it's not...
I, I'm not, I don't think it's...
But you have to propose something...
I'm not prepared to do it this second, to be perfectly honest. And, you know, I'll think about it as we...
But don't you think their action plan would take care of each one of those two areas? For example, curricular, let's just make an assumption here. You're analyzing second-grade math, and you realize that there is a gap. This was supposedly taught in first grade, but these students haven't had it. So now, they're gonna supplement and do a little extra teaching of formula X, Y, and Z to supplement. That's, that's the analysis of curricular, like, something that they have to do an extra step. But instructional need, that's more, whether it's teacher training, or, you know, for example, identifying a need there, the new curriculum in fourth grade for social studies. There's not enough information there, we're gonna have to bring in a consultant. I'm just hypothesizing.
I'm not...
To supplement that. I mean, I...
I'm not looking at, I'm not saying instructional need, which is exactly, which can be linked to curricular, which is professional development and training. And I'm saying instructional quality. I care about, like, again, the curriculum, as I said, if you're saying we need to, you know, it's very definable. The instruction, it's what I said before. I'd like to see a little bit more of, you know, people not really upset. Either you get the good teacher or the not as good teacher.
But I know there's a lot of that really goes on.
But how do we raise the bar?
The main interject, though, is now we're introducing another term that I don't know how to define if we're saying instructional quality. So the example we used before was maybe the lack of continuity that you, that may be from classroom to classroom. So I go to the second bullet, and I look at the second bullet, and the second bullet's objective not only documents our curriculum, but it provides that outline and template by which you're gonna have that level of continuity. Because what's doing this, we're looking at teams of teachers that are documenting curriculum. So you look across the grade, if you're looking at seventh grade ELA, if you're looking at third grade, if you're looking at ninth grade English, there's going to be common expectations. There's going to be common assessments that are being utilized. And that addresses that particular concern there. When I look at identifying need, in my mind, when I see this third bullet, I'm not just seeing curriculum, I'm not just seeing instruction. I'm seeing student performance that isn't as satisfactory as we want it to be. Whether that's growth, whether that's achievement, however you wanna define that. So if there are some voids there, there's some deficiencies there, well, how do we solve those deficiencies? And then, to me, you look at it through a couple different lenses. You're looking at it from a curricular standpoint, I think, maybe to Maria's examples, to not introduce a new storyline. But you go in and you look, we have gaps in instruction. Are there holes in what we should be teaching? Or are we looking at how the teachers, if there aren't gaps, how our teachers are delivering that particular program, that curriculum? Because then it's an instructional piece, but I think it's, it's gotta be unique to what the problem is that we're...
I, you and it's very different. In fact, as far as I'm concerned, I don't care if we don't have any facilities goals. I care so much more about what goes on in the classroom to those students. And the two basic things are curriculum and instruction. And to me, if that doesn't, if that isn't enough to give instruction its own bullet point, then, I mean, you know, everything else pales in comparison. And improve curriculum communications, okay, that would be nice. Not nearly as important to me as in the instruction pieces. I just, I think it speaks to, you know, again, what the, where the district sees its overall priorities. I think it sends a message to the community and the students and everyone in our universe as to, this is really important to us. And again, it's me, I mean, it's, you know...
And I don't wanna discount that, Robin. Your thoughts here are important. But maybe as, if we can move forward, it's one of the other objectives, maybe an idea will come to mind that will help us connect on this, or maybe it's work that we need to continue to do.
Well, maybe that we can go through everything else. Leave this as, you know, something we can, that can be inserted over the next two weeks. We can almost even have two different versions with or without it. We can set this one without at the next meeting.
All right. I guess, just to go back, because I didn't, this wasn't on the original one, but the curriculum mapping as a goal, kinda based on the conversations we had. And again, I always am looking at efficiencies and time versus value of the time span. I'm, I, for one, I'm concerned about the amount of time that you described as to this detailed curriculum mapping plan. And I, as a goal, I already, personally, I'm not even sure it's a goal. I'm not even sure it's, you know, we need that much detail. Is it, you know, I think we really need to take a step back and say, is this necessary? Or is it just kind of looking at what outcomes we're expecting? And is there, is there a Cliff Note version that we can do that would essentially get us to the same place? Save us a lot, you know, save our resources for other things that we needed in. I'm, so I'm not there on the curriculum mapping. I feel like we need to talk about that as a board, maybe a little bit more, and see where everyone else is coming out on the curriculum mapping.
I actually, okay, go ahead.
No, I wanna jump in. They're talking about how important it is. I'd rather talk about critical it. We need to have a common map that where we can see where our children are going. The teachers can look back and see where their kids have been. This is, we were talking about the portal before and the resources that it can provide. This is a concept that's gonna provide layers and layers of information for teachers. If I'm a teacher at any particular grade level, and I have a group of kids that are struggling with a particular skill or content area, I can go to that instructional objective, to that learned outcome within this software. And by clicking on that, I can back all the way back how that's been taught. I can pull the resources those teachers have used. I can find all that information we need to go back and reteach and support those kids. I think it's critical. Maybe what we need to say is that we need to look at it. Maybe it just becomes a part of the action plan of the first bullet. Because, you know what, that is documenting that shift.
I think that's when you say it's operational, it's not necessarily the goal.
Well, I do think, right, I agree with that, too.
Well, I, you know, I agree with you about this, but, you know, I would, I really feel like this is a big effort that hasn't, I certainly don't feel like, you know, I haven't had any good handle on the cost of that, but, you know, I, you know, versus all the other ways that similar goals might be accomplished. And it feels like something we shouldn't presume we're gonna use a particular software to do X, Y, and Z.
Except we've already purchased it.
Well, how much does it cost?
I have to say, there's a point to this, that there's aspects of it, on the basis with all due respect, that we're hired to do a job, and one of our responsibilities as the leaders of your school district, to ensure that we have a well-documented, well-articulated curriculum. I'm going to tell you today we do not. We need this as the foundation of our instructional program, K-12, for every single class. And I, I'm not kind, I, I don't want to sound defensive, but I am going to be assertive and tell you that it's irresponsible for us not to pursue this initiative.
Say that last sentence again, you're.
He's saying it's irresponsible for us not to.
Oh, it was, I didn't hear irresponsible, sorry, okay.
But.
This, this is something that becomes the foundation of all of our work, whether we want to use curriculum or we want to use instruction, becomes a foundation to that.
In our last meeting, we said that at some point, Dr. Cora would present what this mapping exercise looked like, right? And that, it sounds like is necessary.
And it's also.
Wait, let me just finish. It's, it's, I think that's a necessary, a necessary thing to help, you know, John and the rest of us understand exactly what you said. I mean, what you said was very eloquent and persuasive, but I think for some people, they need more than just the language coming from our superintendent. They would like to see exactly what the outcome is.
And maybe I could just link it back to what Robin was talking about, instruction. So you have a new teacher come in. The only way that a new teacher knows, and I don't mean a brand-new teacher, a teacher new to our district, the only way that they know what to teach without constantly going next door to say, what am I going to do tomorrow? What is this unit? What do you mean we're doing a unit on Colonial America? Like, I don't know what that is. The only way that teachers know that is that it has to be written somewhere. We don't have that, we don't have our curriculum written. We don't have the kind of scope and sequence, and I'm looking at Catherine. We don't have the kind of scope and sequence that should be readily available to everybody on our website. That's what curriculum mapping provides. So there is a basic foundation here that Dr. Harrison is referring to that most districts of our, of our caliber have. It, it's a baseline. We're not talking about enhancement. We're talking about a baseline here.
I think, I mean, scope and sequence, I'm all for.
But that's part of this process.
But it's the level of detail and the, and the manpower that it's going to take. And then the question I have is, and then what if something changes? And then the state changes something, does that mean it's another, you know?
It's dynamic.
Hundred hours to get up to speed.
It's ongoing. Once you map your curriculum, it's ongoing. So districts that do this well, it lives and breathes. It's dynamic. It's not a binder. We have lots of binders that sit on a shelf. It's not a binder. It's that you're constantly going in and you're realigning. Because we looked at our data and we saw that, you know, we're not where we need to be or the kids aren't coming up with that math skill that we thought they were going to have. Well, why? Where is that? Were we doing it in second grade and they're not coming with it in third grade? Why, when we assessed for it, did our students not demonstrate that knowledge? That informs everybody's thinking. That also for, for special education teachers who really, especially at the secondary level, who are connected to so many different curriculum areas and supporting students, they need to have ways to easily access what is going on in that Global One class, like what is happening in there? And we need that information readily available for our teachers. We talk about efficiencies. We need to create better, more efficient systems and that's one way that we do that. So it, it supports instruction every day to have something like that. We just don't have it yet. We need to do it.
So, John, when you, when you.
I guess I get that. I feel like it's incumbent on board members to understand what the resources are that are going to the cost side and what other ways we might be able to achieve the like sort of goal might be, such as borrowing somebody else's.
John.
Can't borrow someone else's bricks.
I was going to say, I pushed back to that point last time, that we want something to be greater, stronger, better than everybody else. And we want to be unique. And how do we say we borrow? That's the curriculum is.
I'm sorry, how do we say we borrow? I didn't.
How do we say we borrow something from somebody else?
I, I think you're going to borrow, pass us.
Take, take someone else's.
No, I do want to know how much it costs and what the resources are, what we're sacrificing. Because if we're talking about teachers taking time to do, that's, that's the, that's time they're not in the classroom. And that's a cost. You should know. I, I don't think you can talk about any of this stuff coherent unless you're aware of the cost.
So when you removed it, when you removed this as a goal on your edited version, your intention was not just to remove it as a goal, but to say, we shouldn't be doing this at all?
Well, my intention is to say, I don't feel like I'm to the point where I accept that it's obvious that we should be doing it in this way. And I don't want to prejudge in our goals that kind of conversation, which I feel I still have to handle. And I feel like it's probably the reason why I'm good, I haven't made that decision.
I, I disagree. I feel like comments from.
Disagree that I don't have a.
No, 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 I know, I disagree with. Okay, finish.
Yeah, no, that's it, sorry.
Um, I disagree. I actually feel that this mapping of our curriculum is crucial. If you've listened to any of the comments that parents have made through the years, it's the inconsistency, grade to grade, teacher to teacher, within a grade. And now with this, you know, with the new standards, yes, I think it, it helps what is existing. But I think the, the other disconnect that parents have been complaining about for years, and they are the experts for me, is, you know, how does math K-five align itself with math six through 12? Is there a disconnect? Does it flow? What are we not giving our kids at a younger age that would help when they're older, for example? I, I mean, I find this to be extremely crucial.
But that math issue that you just went, I mean, I think by nature of the common core, that's no longer an issue. I think the state has taken that away from the individual districts and it's kind of outlined a sequence for us. So I don't think.
It's become the core, it's set up learning objectives and you have to build a curriculum around them and how you're teaching them and what you're doing on a daily basis and what your assessments are. So you can turn and say that the math modules that are being utilized in the elementary grades can appear to be like a, a curriculum, but we're using pieces of them. And we have strategy associated with them and we're developing our own assessments that go with them. So where do you take that information store? So when that new teacher joins us next year, when the teacher changes grades, when we are trying to evaluate student success, you have to go back to something this becomes the foundation for. I think we're having a, a conversation that's getting down to specifics and management of your educational programs. And I don't know if that's what our objective is today.
It's also not something that generally speaking, the board is supposed to get involved with in that. We define the what, we don't define the how.
Given that it's a goal and that I'm uncomfortable with it as a goal.
I was happy taking it off as a goal.
But I'm saying, I, I, I feel like also it brought up a lot of questions. And frankly, I think the board's role is also to understand how to efficiently use our resources. And if, if something's going to take a lot of resources and a lot of teachers out of classroom, then we just have to make sure that that's all in line. I mean, ultimately.
Why don't we have, but why don't we have our experts tell us at some point to the, what, to what extent that's happening? And from a goal-setting process, we could remove that as a goal because Chris himself acknowledged the fact that it's more of an action than it is a goal. And then that way, we can move on with our goal-setting process.
Next night.
And we can go back, loop back and analyze more of what they're doing through the con act.
I think that's fine.
Because you guys are on a much more fundamental level. You guys are at, why are we even doing this, right? So it's.
No, I mean, I understand the why. It's, it's the most effective way to do it.
I get the why, I get the why, too, but my question is, right? What, what is, what is it costing various aspects of it, money, time?
I'm going to say this was a commitment that we did last year.
It's a commitment, that's a.
Why was it a wrong decision? So I don't, I don't.
But then we shouldn't be, with all due respect, we shouldn't be taking our time here for you to understand it. That's when you go and meet with the superintendent and understand why we made a decision in the past, honestly.
No, with all due respect, I was here last year and I don't remember the details of this. I don't remember. I'm sorry.
So you voted on something and approved something that you don't remember anymore?
Can you tell me exactly how much it's going to cost and how many hours it's going to take and how many teachers are going to be out in the classroom?
It's about forty thousand dollars, I think. Yep?
Sixteen or seventeen.
Sixteen or seventeen, five.
Okay, so you're significantly off, so obviously you don't remember either. I think each of us.
But I'm not the one questioning.
But you know what, each of us as a board member has the right to. Conduct ourselves as we wish. And if you think that we're being too specific, that's fine. That's a conversation we can have. And I think we all agree, we'll take it out of the goals for now.
Right.
But, you know, we're, we're each entitled to come from a different place and, you know, and respect each other for that.
I'm not disrespecting you.
Okay.
How about the call about technology? Assess the use of technology related curriculum.
Well, my, my, my thought on this was simply to take out the rest, to stop, assess the use of technology and related curriculum, full stop, or semi-colonize. And to not prejudge why we're doing this. And because I think we need to have a pretty expansive assessment of technology and related curriculum and not prejudge that technology is automatically going to run. It's just maybe we're just playing games. I don't know, I guess. And I, I just want to keep those, those judgments out of the calls and what that inform how we go on doing it. And that's why I didn't make that request.
But again, I, I guess I, I need to hop on the word assess again, which is, to me, I, I think the technology should be a loftier thing. I mean, I would like to see a technology plan at least embarked upon. I'm not saying we're going to have it done and I, you know, in a perfect world, we'd be implementing.
Can we just add in the word develop, assess and develop?
And develop a plan for the use of.
Yeah, that would be happy, yes.
Because that is speaking to the action that we need to accomplish this year.
Right, as opposed to just, okay, we just.
Assess and develop.
Right.
And develop a plan.
Assess the use of technology and develop a technology plan in the related. And the related curriculum. Assess the use of technology in the related curriculum. How about just putting it at the end, after your semicolon, and then say, and develop a technology plan?
And develop a. We know what it is.
I guess.
I have a couple other edits, suggested edits on my group of this.
Yeah, me too. Go ahead. You're going to go?
Go ahead.
No, I just say, I have the same comment about, I, I feel like if our goal for the entire year is to review our college prep and admissions process, I, I'm, again, feel like reviewing is more operational. I would like to at least have a little more focus of a reach goal for college prep and admissions, since I also know that it was a big focus last year. So after two years, I'd like to at least have something tangible that we could accomplish at the end of the year with regards to that.
Was it a big election?
No, no, I'm just saying, it was just, it ended up being a lot of focus on the college admission and a lot of conversation, a lot of focus.
College preparation and mission.
But it also raised the bar. We spent more time on it. And Raina personally worked very hard in that department in terms of, you know, raising level, trying to make it function smoother.
How do we, you're saying, how do we state it as a goal?
Yeah.
Right, again, how do we rephrase that as a goal? Exactly. You're good at this.
I think we can, I think we, we can work on that language.
I mean, I'm fine with the concept of it being college placement and assessment. I'd like to change the language a little bit to make it a goal.
I know what you want.
And then, and then, um, that's.
And this has been something that I'm wanting to put in. It's not, it's not a good, right?
That was a good suggestion. Did you have any other curriculum additions?
I'm, I'm okay on the curriculum.
Okay.
Well, my, I want to stick that to us.
Oh, sure.
No, go ahead.
We just sort of just do the curriculum one and then.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Are you okay with it?
Oh, yeah, I'm fine, yeah.
Do you have anything?
Nope.
Well, my only other question I, I pose is, well, two things. I had an issue with the first bullet, please both relate to the first bullet. The word, and I think there are two versions of the same thing. I had a, I have an issue with the word align with existing curriculum because I'm really afraid that we will take the common core as the full goal of our curriculum. You know, all we have to do is get a curriculum that matches the common core. And yes, it has to be articulated and more fulsome than the common core is maybe, but it's just the common core. And we as a district just have to do the common core and do a lot of it for a good district. I don't believe that will take. And so, you know, I'm worried about the word align and I was suggesting maybe a word like adapt the existing curriculum to the common core where necessary. And then the other part, the other point which is similar is perhaps suggest adding a phrase at the end of this while maintaining higher standards where possible.
Right, because that's meeting the state standards, but as I said, we're Ervington, we're more than that.
Yeah, and we're, and we're, we expect you.
Absolutely.
And, and, as does everything.
Yep.
And, um, so, that's, that's my.
Raina, what do you think? I'm just curious, you're closer to.
You know, I, I, I think, I, I think the common course, I, I think there's confusion about what the common course standards actually are and this idea that we're above them in some way. I think for me, it speaks to developing a deeper understanding of what the common core is. Because I, I don't, it's not that I don't think we should exceed. I, I think, I actually agree with what Catherine shared when she stood up about looking at our continuous improvement. For me, it's not about the common core, yeah, the common core is, it, it's, it's, it's complex and it pushes complex thinking. So for me, it's more about what do we want to do with our curriculum? It should be aligned, adapted, however you want to say it, but the common core is, I, I think does push higher level thinking, but then it's our decisions about what are we going to do in our classrooms to align our curriculum with the common core expectations and beyond. It's not, I, I know.
It sounds like, but it sounds like we're talking about academic rigor and common core are not mutually exclusive.
That's a really good way to say it, Robin. I think that's exactly right. And I think there's a perception that they are, they're not. And it doesn't mean we're only limited to the common core. I think we do want to be beyond. But I don't think we should minimize what the common core brings to the table.
And I don't think my suggested wording would minimize it. It still puts common core, puts, fuck the center of the first bullet in a, in a outline. I, I just feel strongly, I mean, I feel like you're delighted and willing to hear of deconvinced other ones, but I won't just believe it when I told it, that meeting the common core is enough of an objective for our district. Every district, not to put too fine a point on it, every district in the country is aiming for the common core standards. Why are we paying currently times as much as the average district for an education like that, in a sense? And we have to do more somehow.
So, and one of my thoughts, John, your, your add-on was while maintaining higher standards where possible, one of my thoughts would be while providing and enriching a rigorous experience for every student. Because I don't know how you identify in a curricular document that we're setting a higher standard. You can find opportunity for extension. You're going to find opportunity on a daily basis to provide rigor.
I like what you said.
I'd say in high school, right? I mean, how does all of the AP programs, this is not part of the common core at all, but we care about it. We care deeply about that.
There is.
Whatever else, that, whatever other advanced academic opportunities that can.
The thinking behind the common core and the expectations behind the common core actually do, can align to an AP course. It's more about what we're doing. That's why you can't separate out, we still need to continue to develop our curriculum. In other words, the common core may guide us, but we still need to make our book selections for our English program. We still need to make our choices about our curriculum resources. We still need to make the decisions about instruction and how we're going to deliver instruction. All of those pieces sit on this foundation of whether it be the common core or other defined expectations that we're going to marry with the common core. We don't sit in isolation with just the common core standards. We do offer higher level and rigorous college-level courses at our high school. But we want to make sure that whether I'm in an AP language course or I'm in some other really newly designed English elective, we still want to make sure that we've defined a set of standards and expectations, a rigorous set of standards and expectations. a set of standards and expectations, a rigorous set of standards and expectations for all our students. Okay.
But it's funny, after reading more about the common core, it almost seems like, you know, they're, they're just saying, here's kind of the skill set that you need, and then we're defining the ways in which the kids are gonna use the skills. So I don't, now that I've kind of read more about it, I totally get what you're saying, it's not like going above the common core, it's like, those are the skills we need, period. It's how are we gonna then take them and apply them on a higher level?
The word that can be a bit of a red herring, I think, is learning is standards, right? Because it's, yes, there are, there's assessments that create the sense of standards, but the actual common core principles are more about ways of learning and skills that you have to have, it's not as though we can't have higher standards at the same time.
I think it forces continuous practice of those skills as well, I think it means, you know, it doesn't mean we just do a unit of study and then, you know, done, oh, I met that standard, I'm good. Actually, it really says, we need to repetitive, we need to be repetitive, we need to continuously push our students, especially at the high school level, to demonstrate those higher level skills, those skills of writing, the more rigorous reading.
I, you know, I think we should finesse this in this goal, frankly, I don't think we're gonna have to be minimized, I have this issue, I think it's very important. I think we should just, you know, some dot for the, for the room for the higher standards or whatever, and we'll take it if we're comfortable with it.
That's fair, we could add that. That's fair, I mean, we could add a piece there that I think would elevate it to a place of confidence.
You had a suggestion, I had a suggestion, we'll find, figure something out and we'll-
Yeah, we're not, we're, we're talking more about how we describe what we do rather than what we're doing, I think, but I just wanna make sure.
We can go on curriculum addition now?
I have no more comments. I don't know exactly where we came, we've given you my suggestions.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm not sure exactly what-
I'm gonna, I'll work on the college preparedness goal, to make it more of a goal.
Yeah, I'll try to work on the instruction.
So facilities. So, so John, and this is, I think you stepped in and you had some concern again about being judgmental there.
Well, I, I, I'm just worried that on second and third bullet, that the modifiers that steps into two of the bases, you don't need them, you know, you don't need to be, develop a plan for campus athletic facilities and fields, and then we do that in the context of all of the things we need for those fields, it's, you know, I just don't see what the rest of that adds, that line adds to what's in there, the two address safety and these things.
So then just that-
So just take out the safety and-
Yeah, and similarly, I don't think that, I think the next bullet could end that for grounds and evaluation system needs for buildings and grounds, maybe I, what the others are gonna say is we, if I'm a client, there's still a question.
Well, it's very operational, I mean, I gotta tell you, it's my understanding that every year we evaluate the needs of the buildings and the grounds, that shouldn't be a goal, that should be part of running the district.
Yeah, there's a, there's a distinction between being a department and being a call.
I mean, to me, it's really maybe under the, evaluate the existing needs and determine a set of priorities for the buildings and grounds, and there's something in terms of, there's a decision that needs to be made in terms of how we're gonna allocate the money, it's not just looking at what needs the money.
Could that determine priorities to that?
Yeah, this is also folding into the, this also connects to the long-term plan.
It does, that, specifically this, buildings, facilities.
I actually thought we didn't need that last bullet point.
You don't need it?
No.
What do, can I just ask for clarification on, on the second bullet point, what you meant by the word plan? When you said develop a plan for the fields, do you mean like, a determin, you mean like, decide if we're gonna do a bond, or decide if we're gonna turf, is that what you meant by plan? I didn't, I wasn't-
And east field, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what we said.
So it's really an action.
Right, we have a bunch of ideas out there, we've got some things that land proposed, and what we have to decide as a board, are we gonna put all this together into-
Because remember, we tabled all of those discussions because of east field, and now we have more direction and we know more about what the-
Yeah, I just didn't know what plan, I, I got confused on it at first, I, it wasn't clear to me that we meant, so, but we, we wanna come to a decision this year, we wanna decide if we're gonna do a bond, if we're not gonna do a bond, what we're gonna turf, what we're gonna do drainage for, whatever.
Right.
Okay, that, for some reason, I'm not, I didn't get that when I first read that. I'm wondering if it's because, I'm wondering why I didn't get that.
We can try and add a couple of words to clarify that.
I wouldn't even mind putting in by, in my, you know, the end of the school year, like, you know, make, you know, outline next, outline-
The action plan is gonna be time-sensitive.
Everything's, yeah. Action plan, maybe it's an action plan, maybe that's it, just develop an action plan for the fields. Because a plan for the fields, I literally, if I first read it, I was like, do they mean like, what sport on what field, like, I didn't know what you meant, actually. How about that, just an action plan?
Yeah, that's good.
And we're taking out the third bullet point?
The first one, John? Oh, continue to-
And see if we subtract out that third one, we can add in the instructional.
Well, we need, well, my third, first one, I was just suggesting your, at the beginning, said utilize the two, twenty twelve, thirteen space utilization, continued to sort of suggest we can even last, we have, I wouldn't say this, there were results, but we used the stuff.
Utilize, you know.
I'll be honest, when I typed this, I had to continue to there once, and I took it out, and then I had to put it back in because there's some issues while working. Yeah, it was, we moved that one point, sorry, I shouldn't have covered that.
Trust your first instinct.
So looking at long-range planning, define the indicators of success and of the indicators of successful school experience. Is that direct, actionable enough? Review and refine the mission and vision of the district. John, in our communication, you had a conversation again to strike everything beyond the words.
I think it stands alone fine without the-
Two.
Yeah.
Without the-
When I was trying to capture your notes and media key on our conversation before, I was placing a value on the participation that didn't look further than in media key.
Yeah, I think we all value that, which is-
They didn't, wait, so we're still on review and refine, right?
Review and refine the mission and vision of the district.
You had written, right. I would, I'm wondering if we also need to kind of tack on the end of that, like to, you know, clearly define the district priorities moving forward. There's something about our priorities-
That's different than a mission.
Could be, then.
I would say that's another sub-bullet down under here.
That's fine, I mean, that was, I had it as a sub-bullet, but then it seemed like maybe it worked it, okay, that's fine.
All right. Then the next one, John, you just suggested draw a provide for, and this would be great.
Create.
Yeah.
Yep.
Just clear language.
Yeah.
Evaluate the district's financial health and devise a strategy to inform future financial decisions. John, you were looking at striking the strategy necessary and, so strategy framework or strategic framework?
Yeah, I think I need a word, other word than that.
Advise a strategy, a strategy framework?
Just a strategy.
Advise a strategy framework or a framework.
To devise a framework.
Yeah, framework, just, right, you don't need to use the word strategy.
Okay. Identify opportunities for enhancing the district's operations and infrastructure.
Since we're taking out that other goal, does that need to be just rewarded slightly? Because it's not just enhancing, it's really, you know, evaluating what we have to invest, invest in going forward. Specifically enhancing the district's operations and infrastructure.
But you need something there, don't you?
Well, you say identify opportunity, or you would actually rewrite it entirely, say, evaluate the district's operation infrastructure.
Question if that then becomes a real goal for long-range planning.
Right, because that's not, yeah, you're right. All right, let it, let's stand.
I think it's fine.
Okay, Robin, do we wanna come back, you were talking about information priority?
To me, that's-
Define priorities, district priorities.
Clearly define district priorities moving forward, or, or just clearly define district priorities, period. It would be academic and fiscal and probably athletic, I mean.
Clearly define district, clearly define district priorities.
I think I could leave it at that.
I have trouble understanding what that is.
I guess to me, I'll give you, I'll give you, I'll give you a very specific example. Okay, here's an example, is world language a priority, or is, is doing the football a priority? I mean, I think we need to identify, what's a priority of the district?
Yeah, exactly, to me that comes in, you know, if we have, like, say a budgetary trade-off between football and management, just kind of, that's what we do with it.
In that, in that case-
This is a priority, but I mean, kind of, we would inform that as sort of a bigger set of objectives.
I, I guess I just, I just feel like I'll often come down to making a determination, and I think it's gonna come into play when we try to figure out what we wanna do with the facilities and the fields, which is, there's, you know, funds are limited, they're not unlimited, and, you know, how do we view ourselves as a district? I mean, do we shave a little bit across the board so we get mostly everything, or do we end up saying, no, we wanna fall more heavily on, you know, the, if we can't have it all, do we wanna fall more heavily on, you know, kind of keeping status quo in the school, doing pretty well, and maybe making sure that we can do two fields instead of one? I, I mean, that's a priority to me, I'm not, I'm not using, these are all just examples.
But is that a goal? I'm not so sure it's a goal.
But it's part of the long-range planning exercise.
But I don't know if we could do long-term planning without defining our priorities, I don't know how I could do that.
So it might be, for example, you know, it might be a list of things we think are of kind of the core of what we think makes it important for Irvington School to make it special, like it has, you know, I'm not saying that these are what I think, like it's, like it has a very inclusive sports program and lots, plus there's lots of participation, for example.
Is that an indicator of success?
Yeah, well, not necessarily is it success or is it just something we value as a community, or we need to have a really strong, for example.
Right, or maybe we can't keep a, right, we can't keep a three-year sequence of some class going because the numbers are really low, but we could if we had money, or are we gonna spend the money on?
Yeah, but now you're getting into a sort of, is it learning more than-
But, but it's not a specific decision, it's just an underlying philosophical priority, like, I guess it's like-
But is that different for-
Who we are and who we wanna be. I don't, I don't know how to make this decision otherwise, I mean, otherwise, I'm just, honestly, I just get back to, you know, years ago, before any of us were involved, I think, Irvington, you know, Irvington approved a sixty million dollar bond for a village that has six thousand, you know, people, and our taxes went through the roof, but that was a priority, I mean, getting the school done and whatever, it was fabulous, but then, you know, now, twelve years later, all these people don't understand why their taxes were so high, well, there was a clear priority, and it was to build a fabulous school and make it a great learning center for the students, and the money, everyone understood at the time that that, getting school done was the priority and keeping their taxes low was clearly not a priority, maybe people didn't understand that. But I just think moving ahead, we need to make a decision, as to, you know, are we gonna try to funnel more money toward growing certain programs? I feel like we've been status quo in the schools for so long, I mean, ever since I've been on the board, I've heard, well, we don't really have money to talk about that, and we don't have money to talk about that, and I think if we're long-range planning, I think it's finally a chance for us to decide, where do we wanna spend our money over the next ten years? And that, maybe prioritizing isn't the word, but I would like to finally have a direction for where we wanna spend the money. I don't like the idea that every year, something gets voted on by the sitting board, and then, okay, and then it changes the next year, and we end up losing out in the long term, because in order for it to make any substantive changes, I think we gotta make a long-term commitment.
But, but that also changes with the boards.
Yeah, but I think if you as a district identify what your prior, what your vision is and what kind of school you're gonna be, then I think that most boards are gonna be, okay, this is where we're at, this is what I'm buying into. Less, if you don't have it written, or less likely, then it does change a lot.
This is beginning to resonate with, I think, what, when I remember writing my campaign in that as part of a long-term plan, we really need to figure out where we want to go as a district, and I tossed out examples, do we want, you know, we should have fields that are good for our athletics, we should have, we should have the kind of language instruction we want, maybe that's another, maybe it's instruction in minority rates or whatever it is, but, you know, as, as tossing out, I'm not saying that those should be the important priorities the board has, those kind of are priorities.
Well, it's almost developing high-level priorities with respect to academics, athletics-
Facilities.
Facilities.
Yeah, and, and on, almost electives, too, yeah, I guess that would be-
Trade-offs, where is it that we want, or not pushing, maybe conceptually you're there, you just need to put it into a statement.
Develop high-level priorities that-
Among.
That clarify the trade-offs.
What about just high-level priorities among academics, athletics, and facilities?
I'm afraid, I'm afraid that's just too specific.
Yeah. It's what?
I'm a little worried.
Too specific, okay.
And then it also might exclude, then we're gonna find, oh, we excluded the arts.
So what about just establish a high-level priority?
To inform decision.
District priority.
I like that, to inform decision-making.
Yeah, yeah, I like that, too, that's exactly why I think we need to talk about it, yeah.
To inform decision-making and long-term planning.
Yeah, yeah.
So it's under long-term planning, so it's, yeah.
All right, all right, all right, look at the title of that.
It's so leady, and Tanya's going.
I think our three audience members-
Might we take those for us?
Yeah.
Just go back to the-
I think our three audience members deserve a hand for sitting through this paint-drying experience.
Very long order. How come Bob always makes me take these long ones? All right, I think we, um, I'll get my agenda. Okay, so, I think we have our marching orders, the last item on the agenda is comments or community member questions, anything not on the agenda?
Can we go to executive session?
Great. What?
Anyone?
I was gonna say, are we gonna go back to executive, or we just wanna carry that over?
Okay.
Do you wanna carry that over?
Let's do it quickly and then we'll decide. We actually now need to, I guess, let me, we need to adjourn to another executive session for the purpose of-
Potential litigation.
Potential litigation. So that said, our next board meeting is- November 5th, oh, election day, really? Wow, here, and, motion to adjourn into executive session.
Don't move.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries four zero, thank you.